Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Boston School Committee. I'm Chairperson Jerry Robinson, who will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask my colleagues to please unmute and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Because this is a remote meeting, I'll ask Ms. Sullivan to please call the roll.
Chair. Dr. Alkins.
Present.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez. Ms. Lo Para. Mr. Meta.
Present.
Ms. Palanco Garcia.
Present.
Mr. Tran. Mr. O'Neil.
Present.
Ms. Robinson.
Present.
Thank you. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Tonight's session is being shared live on Zoom. It will be rebroadcast on Boston City TV and posted on the school committee's webpage and on YouTube. The recording will be available in all of the BPS languages. Tonight's meeting documents are posted on the committee's webpage, under the April 12th meeting link. The meeting documents have been translated into all of the major BPS languages. Any translations that are not ready prior to the start of the meeting will be posted as soon as they are finalized. The committee is pleased to offer live simultaneous interpretation in Spanish, Haitian Creole, Caboveriano, Cantonese, Mandarin, Mandarin Vietnamese, and American Sign Language. The interpretation feature has been activated. Click the globe icon at the bottom of your screen to select your language preference. I'd like to remind everyone to speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you, everyone who signed up for public comment. Sign up for public comment closed today at 4:30 PM. Please make sure that you are signed into Zoom under the same name you used to sign up for public comment. You can use the Zoom tools to rename yourself so that committee staff will be able to recognize you when it comes time to call on you. Thank you for your cooperation. Before we begin this evening, I want to take a moment to honor the life and legacy of longtime civil rights leader Mel King, who passed away last month and whose funeral was celebrated yesterday. Mel's work and spirit made an immeasurable impact on the careers and lives of countless educators and youth advocates across Boston and beyond. He taught us about the meaning of working together and serving our community and the power of raising our voices in unity to transform our city. We know that the BPS community includes numerous schools and district leaders, parents and grandparents who marched alongside Mel, were moved by his big heart and felt called to be their best selves inspired by his presence. Mr. King dedicated his life to supporting our young people, including teaching at the Massachusetts Institute of Technology, serving as director of the Southend Technology Center and mentoring upcoming leaders to tackle our toughest challenges. His mayoral campaign in the early 80s broke barriers, paving the way for generational change. Mel was a tire champion of our youth in our collective quest for quality education in schools. We are proud that Mel's memory and legacy will live on with the committee's formal renaming of the William McKinley Southend Academy to the Melvin H. King Southend Academy. On behalf of the entire BPS community, we'd like to send our deepest condolences to the King family. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Let's continue to work together to make Mel's vision a reality. Move on to the approval of minutes. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the March 22nd, 2023, school committee meeting as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cardad Hernandez. Ms. Lo Para. Ms. Palanco Garcia.
Yes.
Mr. Tran. Mr. O'Neil.
Yes.
Ms. Robinson.
Yes.
The minutes are approved unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Mary Skipper.
Good evening, Madam Chair and school committee members. Before I begin, I also wanted to share my heartfelt condolences to the family of Mel King on behalf of everyone at the Boston Public Schools. For many years, Mel King's work and presence left an indelible mark on the careers and lives of countless educators across Boston, the Commonwealth, and our nation. He taught us about the meaning of coming together and serving our community, the collective impact and the importance of the Village of Boston. I had the honor of working with Mel in my early years in BPS on several technology projects with the district and in the community in the South End. His passion, love for young people, and brilliance was part of every encounter. His work and his life have impacted every single resident of Boston, irrespective of race, class, or neighborhood. Mel influenced generations of Bostonians, especially our young people, many of whom are working tirelessly to make his vision of equity a reality. We are so proud that his memory and spirit will live on as BPS is formally renaming the William McKinley Southend Academy to the Melvin H. King Southend Academy so that in the years to come, the young people of our city can continue to be inspired by his work and legacy. Thank you, Mel. We continue the work unfinished in your honor. He will be truly missed. I'd like to provide a few key updates tonight as part of my report. One of them has to do with our exam schools. As you may know, back in early April, we sent out notices to the rising seventh grade families indicating if their student met the eligibility criteria for an exam school. Unfortunately, after the eligibility notices were sent to the rising seventh grade families, we discovered that we used the wrong methodology to calculate students' GPAs. Although we work with an external auditor to ensure the accuracy of our calculations, neither the external auditor nor our BPS Office of Data and Accountability caught the error before eligibility notices went out. Since catching the error, the Office of Data and Accountability and the independent external auditor have recalculated and validated the GPAs and double-checked all grading data to ensure accuracy. We are fully confident in the accuracy of the GPA calculations for rising ninth and 10th graders. We understand how important it is to get accurate information quickly and how frustrating this has been for those families who have been impacted of the rising seventh graders. We're working to fix the problem as quickly as possible. A few things that we have done and are doing, we've recalculated all students' GPAs with correct methodology. An internal team has reviewed the recalculations for accuracy. The city auditing department is now reviewing the data as a separate check. The external auditor is not reviewing any of the updated calculations. Instead, the city auditor will do that, auditing department will do that. And we're preparing to send the new eligibility notices to the rising seventh graders within the next 24 to 48 hours. For our rising seventh graders, the overwhelming majority will not see any impact on their eligibility. Some students may see a slight increase in their GPA, while others may see a slight decrease and others may experience no change at all. Of the 1,723 seventh grade student records reviewed, 41 students are now eligible, who were originally told they were not, and 26 students who were told they were eligible do not meet eligibility requirements based on the recalculations. My team has spent the day contacting each of these families directly individually, and the corrected notices will go out later in the week. We expect to send eligibility notices by the end of the week, and the exam school invitations themselves are still scheduled to be sent out in early May, as intended. We're offering those families who are impacted the option to resubmit their school choice forms and learn more about the special admissions process for other high schools. I've asked my team to support these families for as long as it takes to figure out the best fit for our students. We recognize that this mistake impacts not just the students most directly affected, but it also impacts the trust our families have in BPS. I'm committed to rebuilding that trust and addressing challenges transparently as they come up. Part of this will be us looking going forward at having multiple layers of internal check, not just one, and multiple extra. I would also like to update school committee on the Henderson School. The school leadership team and the instructional leadership team have developed a 90-day plan for the Henderson. If you recall, at the last school committee, we had several parents testify with concern, both past parents and current. This led to the school leadership team and the instructional leadership team meeting to develop this 90-day plan under leadership from Dr. Eccleston. They worked with the school parent council, the governing board, as Henderson is a pilot school, and the school site council to get input, and they've identified three strategic priorities and plans for those priorities. The three priority areas are strong instructional focus, addressing the culture and climate, and strengthening student attendance. We will be sharing this plan with all families later this week, but we appreciate the families who have come to the public sessions that we've hosted to share their feedback and provide their input as it's essential. As part of this plan, we've also made a number of investments, including an increase in a school psychology, school psychologist position, an additional special educator, administrator, family liaison, an adjustment counselor, and two additional special education instructors. There's been an inclusion team that's been part of the process as well and has been going into the school to work with staff and with leadership. We've also established or in the process of establishing a literacy room and the purchase of a new collection at the lower campus. And at the upper campus, there'll be an addition of a librarian along with new furniture and collection for the library. So there's been quite a bit of work done with the Henderson. It had a very turbulent year last year, and this year, we're doing everything we can to help destabilize so that they can, you know, carry out and execute the vision of inclusion and promise that the school's always held. Most importantly, we've heard the concerns of the families, and we know that, you know, these areas are the areas of focus that the families have shared concerns about. And we do believe that the additional resources will help to support the needs of the Henderson community going forward. We will certainly stay involved in that process as the school continues to make progress and to stabilize. I would also like to update school committee on roles that we spoke about several months ago. These are called community connection or community connectors. These are new positions that are designed to focus on proactively engaging students by increasing access to resources, including addressing things like food insecurities, providing resources for stable housing, mental health supports, economic opportunities, and really offering supports to, you know, tailored to really student need. It's our hope that these roles, as we've evolved them, that we can further build positive relationships with our young people, particularly in hours different than the school day. These positions ideally are focusing and designed to focus on building wraparound services to really support the whole child and have a component that also supports the social emotional piece that we know our students need post-pandemic. To get to where we are now, which has really been an evolution of the job descriptions, you know, we conducted seven sessions with over 162 partners, made up of parents, students, community partners, school leaders, city agencies and colleagues, central office and school-based student support staff, safety service, and faith-based community members. And we've shared these roles with the Community Equity Roundtable as well, both in the first session we did and then as recent as earlier in the week. Students were especially appreciative of having the chance to provide feedback, having a place at the table in a forum that was really just students. And that, of course, is something we take really seriously because these positions are designed to support our students. We received invaluable feedback from all of the stakeholders about the way in which we were framing the descriptions and the roles, and that certainly led us to evolve the positions, the roles, and to make some significant changes. When we talk about addressing safety, it's really important that we're carrying forward with preventative measures, not just reactive. And a lot of our students are grappling with a lot of challenges, be it mental health, or they have a need for conflict resolution support. And we do believe that these new roles will be dedicated roles that will really have a significant impact on our students, you know, within the community, and they'll serve as additional supports to fill gaps that might exist within schools. What's new about the roles is that they're going to be embedded within the regional model, which is how myself and my team intentionally structured our school support systems. The positions will cultivate learning environments that are safe, secure, supportive, and affirmative. They will collaborate with school safety and the Division of Student Support and other agencies across the city to ensure students are able to access resources necessary for success, both in the school and in the community, where they spend a lot of their time. For example, if one of our community connectors notices a student who's struggling with food insecurity, they'll be swift to alert the proper community-based agencies and internal resources of that school provided by BPS to make sure that the student receives the support they need. Supporting BPS youth with a lens geared toward empowering our young people to advocate for themselves in a productive and restorative manner will be another key piece of building that scale up for our students with these connector positions. These connector positions will also promote and support positive behavioral growth. They'll provide strategic support and safety planning through appropriate outreach, engagement, and service in coordination with school staff and community partners. They'll serve as part of BPS's preventative strategy to address safety concerns, including through positive engagement and mediation efforts and restorative practice. This means wrapping around our students with support so that they feel they are equipped with all the resources available to be successful in their schools and classrooms. In developing the job descriptions for these roles, we utilize the racial equity planning tool, which, as many of you know, helps us to ensure that we are achieving racial equity with, you know, whenever we're developing policy for any and all of our work. There were some concerns raised by the community about the positions that I really do want to address and clarify. I want to be clear that these roles are not funded by BPS. We did our budget process. The city is reallocating the funding for these BPS positions. They'll be available to students throughout the school day and during the after-school hours, evening hours, which really offers greater coverage for additional activities and students who play sports. They will ensure our schools are safe, and obviously, that is of utmost importance to me, to our parents, to our team, and we're being proactive about that work. We're really striving to get these jobs posted in the coming weeks so that they can have some immediate impact. I wanted to say I'm really grateful to the community for just really sharing thoughts, both at the roundtable, but then in all of the different forums that we collected information and particularly to our students for sharing their thinking on it and how these positions could really support them. I think this is the kind of input that really helps us to improve how we work with students and make sure that we keep our students first and foremost. And I also want to thank our team, who's just put in so much energy to make sure that we get this right. Dr. DePina, Dr. Tavares, Chief Coakley-Grace, and Chief Grandson and Chief Kelton. All of them worked collaboratively on this in order to make this happen. I want to share a few bright spots. First, a big thank you to school committee member Rafa Palanca. We had an amazing bus monitor fair that was, you know, held for prospective employees interested in supporting our special education students as bus monitors. Can't thank Rafa enough and the team. They really worked hard to get the word out, door knocking, postering, spreading the word. And it was very clear that they were successful because we, you know, during the fair, over 100 people submitted, were submitted for hire through the Office of Human Capital, and we're now working to get them onboarded and hired to, as they begin that role, the critical role of bus monitor. We will continue to recruit aggressively because we do need more bus monitors, but I think this was an example of partnership and work together and was really truly successful. So we're looking forward to welcoming those new 100 bus monitors, and then we will continue our recruitment activities throughout the spring and summer. I had a chance to attend last week the Ed Vestas showcase at the district hall. This was the opportunity for our community of educators, nonprofit partners, civic leaders, supporters in general, to come together to, you know, discuss creative, on-the-ground strategies and solutions that are happening in schools and to really explore some of the key issues in education. Secretary Totwiler, who's a former BPSer, shared the keynote remarks at the start of the program, and it was then followed by a panel discussion that really built on a framework that the secretary has laid out to the superintendents and to educators in general, which is Heal, Stabilize, and Transform post-pandemic. And, you know, really, the panel represented a range of roles. Many BPS staff were part of it, and it really just gave a very powerful perspective in the district from a school leader lens, from an educator lens, from a family liaison lens, from a central office lens and a partner lens, what it's been like post-pandemic, what are the areas that we see as challenge, and then what are some of the brilliant solutions that are happening to be able to meet our students' needs and see them succeed. So I just wanted to thank, first of all, Marinelle Rusmauri, who is the head of Ed Vestas, but also Secretary Totwiler, who is such, who's so real as he always is in his comments and connection. And then the Jeremiah Burke Dance Team provided, you know, some wonderful example of arts in action, you know, for us, and also, you know, all the BPS staff that participated as part of the panel. Also, just a quick shout out for Boston Public Schools. We're going to be joining the city of Boston on One Boston Day. This will be April 15th, 2023, and this is a day of recognizing the strength, resilience, and generosity demonstrated by Boston residents following the 2013 Boston Marathon, which we all remember. This year, Boston's working, BPS is working alongside its partners in hosting community events for our families to join. And I really just want to encourage everyone to try to check out One Boston Day. Look at the activities. It's www.boston.gov and then forward slash civic-dash-engagement. We'll put it up. It's easy. We'll have it on our website. But this will be an opportunity to really become part of a community engagement effort in symbolizing that 2013 Boston Marathon and how the city came together. Chair, that concludes my report. Happy to take questions, and as always, thanks to the committee for your ongoing support.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'll now open it up to questions and discussion from the committee. Ms. Palanco Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Quiero agradecerle por el reporte a la superintendente, y también quiero agradecer el apoyo y la apertura que tuvieron muchos de los padres de nuestra comunidad que fueron a aplicar para poder ser monitores de buses.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and also thank you for the report that the superintendent has given. I also want to appreciate all of the support that we've gotten for the community and the positions of bus monitors.
Quiero dejarles saber que ha sido uno de los días donde los padres que no nunca habían tenido la oportunidad de ir al distrito educativo sintieron que tuvieron una apertura, como una apertura de bienvenida, y se sintieron bien acogidos.
And I just want to say that the parents who never had the opportunity to participate in one of the district's events, and they felt very welcome.
Porque muchas veces nosotros planteamos los problemas, pero no es solo decir que existen los problemas, sino cómo podemos ayudar para tratar de que estos problemas se puedan solucionar o se puedan tener puertas abiertas para otras personas que ayuden con la necesidad de monitores de buses que hay.
And not only this was an opportunity to explain the problems, so that there are problems that exist, but also it was an opportunity to say that we can help and to open doors to other solutions around other needs that we have around bus monitors.
Lo segundo que quiero decir esta noche es que realmente la noticia que acaba de dar la superintendente me pone muy triste sobre las escuelas de exámenes.
And the second thing that I want to say tonight is about the news that the superintendent just shared about the exam school. It makes me very sad.
Porque estamos hablando de que hay más de 20 estudiantes que no van a tener la oportunidad de estar en las escuelas de examen y tenían expectativa, y tanto ellos como sus familias.
Because this means that we're talking about 20 students that won't be able, or more than 20 students that won't be able to attend exam schools. And these students and their families, they had these expectations that they were already going to those schools.
En ese sentido, yo mi pregunta es, cuál es, que me gustaría saber, cuál es la población de estudiantes más afectado por esta noticia. Creo que escuché 23. Me gustaría saber qué población estudiantil ha sido más afectada con esto desafortunada noticia.
In that sense, my question is, what kind of population was affected by this? I believe you said there were 23 students who were affected, but what kind of population in that number were affected by the sad news? Yeah.
So through your chair, there were, there were 26 students, four of whom I believe are coming from charters, so I don't have the demographic information. Of the 22, it really mirrors the district from a demographic, gender perspective, and they were pretty distributed from different schools. We are, you know, have worked today to contact those families. This was eligibility, so the seat was not, it was not given, they were not, they did not have a seat. They were eligible. And so there's a combination to determine the seat of the exam and the eligibility of the GPA. So they may or may not have eventually gotten a seat, but they were, they were moved from being eligible to not eligible based on the recalculation. But the group does mirror the district demographic. Um, but it it the the group does mirror the district demographic.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Alkins?
Yes, thank you for the report. Um, specifically in relation to um the sort of the drive for for bus monitors. So where are we now in terms of vacancies? Um, and just what's the, what's the gap left that we still have to um fulfill?
So if Dan Rosengard is on, I will ask him to come on with the specific numbers. My recollection, when we last spoke, we still have several hundred to make us complete, like full. Um, but um, we're we're doing different strategies, like for instance, we're going to distribute so that all buses have a monitor. Um, you know, there's certain things we're doing in the IEP process to identify who needs the actual one-to-one versus having a monitor onboard. Um, so it may be that some of these numbers come down, but if we were to look at just this year and what we calculated based on need, I believe our delta is still a couple of hundred, but Dan is on, so I know you can answer more specific.
All right, yep, thank you, Superintendent. Um, and yes, that that's correct to to meet every student need, uh, you know, fully to be compliant with IEPs. We're still a little over two hundred short. Um, but I think this is, this is really a step that will help us in particular operationally, uh, you know, be able to do a much better job to to get to a point where we can put a monitor on every bus and and kind of make sure that we're able to transport every single student to and from school while we continue working really aggressively to to kind of replicate what was successful in this hiring fair to do it again, to fill the remaining vacancies.
Thank you for that. And so, yeah, I was gonna ask, um, is the intention to do something like the the fair again? Or have you been considering other uh modes of engagement too?
Yes, the the intention is to to do additional hiring fairs and also continue looking at other strategies where, you know, we're looking at um potentially hopefully getting a billboard up soon. Uh, you know, in Boston to to advertise the, you know, the the position with the new rates and the the new monitors contracted. Uh, figuring out better ways to to engage the schools and commute different community groups to to really do a all hands on duck approach.
And so the and and the decision to actually create a fair, was that a community-driven recommendation to to do a fair? Did that did they identify that they would probably most likely uh attend a fair? Um, so I'm just curious of 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 that piece, because I might, I'm pretty sure that would give you insight into probably what's the best mode of engagement sort of moving forward.
It it was actually, yes, it was an idea that came out of um one of the uh, one of the city council hearings in the fall uh where where a number of uh families of special education students spoke at the hearing and and shared some of their ideas to to better reach the community, and and this was one of them. So we appreciated that and hope to build on it.
I think we'll consult with um school committee member Garcia, Garcia to uh to give us, uh, Palanco Garcia to give us um, you know, some advice on it, because I think uh being in close contact with the community and parents led to just, you know, new ways of us thinking about how to be able to engage um and reach people that we hadn't been able to reach. So, um, you know, I I think it was a such a positive experience overall.
Mr. O'Neill?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, first of all, my profound thanks to fellow member, Ms. Palanco Garcia, for the work that she did in helping to organize that fair, showing the power of community organizing. Um, but also, you know, we talk about uh walk the walk, not just talk the talk, and Ms. Palanco Garcia really walked the walk there and um organizing with the community and and raising interest in the bus monitor position. So thank you for that. Muchas gracias, uh, Ms. Palanco Garcia. Um, with regard to the exam school issue, I am trying to choose my words most carefully. This body has spent a lot of time on the exam school issue over the past few years disproportionate to the number of seats in the exam schools relative to our overall district. It's fair to say, the chair has pointed out many times, she wished that we spent the amount of time on the other seats that we had spent on exam school. Nevertheless, it it was the cause of a lot of work over the past couple of years and a lot of public attention. It was a specific, not only request of this body, but a requirement of this body when we passed the exam school policy that we actually have an external party look at the admissions. Because we were that concerned and we expressed it publicly, we were that concerned about with the changes that we were putting in place and the multi-year changes of now it was going to be averages, now we were adding a science requirement, now we're adding the map um assessment tool back and how we were going to coordinate that across the entire network of not just our schools, forty percent of which have some degree of autonomy, and we have all different levels of what's considered a course description, that type of thing, but also our charter schools, private schools, parochial schools. Because all residents of Boston are eligible to apply for our exam schools. We were deeply concerned about problems arising in that process. And so we specifically put in the requirement that we have an outside auditing process on it. And to hear that, in fact, that that secondary source of verification has not worked is deeply disappointing, because folks never used to get a letter that they were eligible to apply for schools. But for many of our families in this city, across our entire city, it is a cause for happiness when they get a letter that they were accepted to either Latin School, Latin Academy, or the John D. O'Brien School of Math and Science. And impacting that in a day and age when we're working so hard to improve transparency and improve trust with our parents and our families and our community members on such an important issue is just a self-inflicted wound that I am astonished at, plain and simple. And I just have to express that, because I think I know our communities expect us. How are we not expressing dissatisfaction with that? To me, it raises the question of this body also passed a policy several years ago, a risk management policy that we specifically called out, and we wanted an internal audit position within BPS. And then the pandemic hit, and there was I hesitate to word, use the word excuse, because that may seem uh difficult to use, but there was reason after reason why that position has not been filled. I call on the district again to reread that policy that this body passed and and look to implement it as soon as possible. Because we need checks and balances within our system. And if people believe their work is going to be looked at and checked, I I believe there may just be a little bit extra effort to begin with to make sure that it is right. And Superintendent, I am sensitive to the fact that we put in place a challenging and comprehensive change to the system. And that the change takes time and that mistakes happen and, you know, my wife has always trained me to assume good intent. And I absolutely do here. Um, but this impacts families and this impacts our students and their hope and belief and faith in our system, and we have to do better, plain and simple.
Yeah. So I um, I agree fully with everything you said. Um, community member O'Neill, I, you know, I think the the Risk Management Office is operational. Um, we have filled the lead position for it. But I think one of the things we've seen is that there's multiple areas of the organization that really need um to have the our our own internal ability to uh to man to to monitor. Um, and so this type of particular monitoring, which has to do with calculations and formula and uh policy interpretation, um, you know, that that will be something that we need to build out as part of the Risk Management Office that was not necessarily um envisioned in the original. Uh, that said, I think when we have things that are extremely high stakes, we've seen in this example where one internal check and one external check just simply isn't enough. And so I think, you know, this is uh certainly for me, causing me to um coming into this, you know, with a policy that's been created um that we need to look at, where are there other gray areas that we may need to look at um to make very clear how we're interpreting things, how we're measuring things, uh what those calculations are going to be. Um, so it's fully transparent. Uh, additionally, uh, I, given the high stakes nature of it, um, this is the type of thing where you have multiple internal layers and multiple external layers that are, that are also checking it. Um, so going forward, that will be the case. Um, and that will be put in place. You know, right now, we're, you know, working on this particular issue. Um, and I think we, you know, we worked with the city auditor's office um because we wanted to have it validated external to the BPS. Um, and so we do feel confident in the work that's being done now, um in in the calculations that will be released. Again, in the ninth and tenth grade, it was, it's more just a delay of time as opposed to nothing had been released on them. Um, but again, it it's causing us to delay a few days getting them that information in order to make sure we double check and triple check everything. Um, but going forward, um, we will communicate, and I believe we have in May, an update to the body uh on exam school in general. And so um we will fold into that going forward, what our recommendation is for, um, given the high stakes nature of it. Um, the additional uh, um, the additional safeguards that we intend to put in place for this. But I agree with you. Um, there's no excuses. There are, there is accountability to this, um, both internal and external. Um, you know, and um, you know, that is how, those are the steps we have to take to make sure that we're holding ourselves accountable um when we make significant error.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Michael, for your eloquent way of putting this, because as you know, and I've I've been having conversations with superintendent and others throughout the week as this information has become available. And my only reaction personally was heart sick. That I could not believe that we were in this situation, knowing how important this work is to our families. And the idea that we have said, you're eligible, and even if it were only one child or two children to go back and saying, um, it's changed, it's not fair. And I said, you know, had, I had had the opportunity, I would have loved to have joined public comment this evening to express my concerns and dismay with this. I mean, I know we, you know, in in moving towards an effort of more equity and opportunity, um, we have created a very complicated process. However, all schools, this community is looking to have opportunity to join our schools. We need to be very clear and consistent as to what each and every school, public, private, whoever, needs to be able to provide us with the information in a way that makes it equitable to calculate. Um, you know, the grades need to be the grades. We know grades are subjective. And I know our equity po, you know, grading policy is something that we're hoping will help us to be able to be more consistent with grading. But making sure we have, we are utilizing, you know, the similar course structure across the district, um, you know, quarters versus trimesters, whatever, that I really believe, even though with all the autonomy so many of our schools have, I feel like the district has to step up and say, this is what we need, when we need it, how we need it. And if we don't get it, then we need to allow families to know that their school is out of compliance or that, you know, we don't have what we need. But we've all got to own this together. Um, and so I I know getting the data piece right is one piece of it, but there are other parts of this policy also that we need to make sure that we are implementing correctly, because every single one of our kids counts, every single one of our families deserves to get the right information the first time.
Yeah, through your chair, I I I I would second that. I think anytime we make a policy um that has a uh that that has an implementation plan with it. Um, it's very important to look at any gray areas of that implementation and work it out. Um, and so I think that is work to be done, um, that we will be looking to make some recommendations when we come before you, um, you know, in May. Um, but that way, there is a consistency and um, you know, to your point, I think, you know, one of the difficulties with like a lot of change of leadership is we end up with a hundred and nineteen schools as opposed to a district. And that's not helpful when we're trying to implement policy of how, you know, what what are science courses, what are history courses? You know, these, these are, these are the things that evolve in that in that process. So um, there's certainly some work to be done here on this. Um, but there also needs to be safeguards, um, multiple safeguards, because anytime uh, it, you know, computers make mistakes, humans make mistakes. And so what you have to do when you have something that's very high stakes is you have to insulate it with multiple layers to catch those mistakes. Um, and so I, you know, I I think in a perfect world, the one internal and the one external should have been enough, but clearly we have proven it wasn't. And so we will insulate it further to make sure that going forward, um, there's multiple sets of eyes on both internal and external to be able to catch anything that's a human error. As well as clarify areas that are gray relative to calculation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you all. Is, if there is no further discussion, I'll now entertain a motion to accept the superintendent's report. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the role?
Thank you, Chair. Dr. Alkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cadet Hernandez, Ms. Lepera, Ms. Palanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran, Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The report is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Before we move on to public comment, I'd like to invite our student representative, Diego Maida, to present his update. Mr. Maida?
Hi, um, could we, uh, yeah, um, uh, hi, um. So, thank you, Chair Robinson. Um, as you guys know, um, my name is Diego Mato. Um, the student school committee representative. Um, today I'll be giving uh the Boston Student Advisory Council update. Um, we continue to meet weekly on Tuesdays from four to six and uh now Fridays from three thirty to five thirty. Um, can we go to the next slide, please? Yes, uh, um. So, most recently, we hosted a youth-led town hall event focused on safety in Boston public schools. Um, thank you, we'd like to send a thank you to Dearborn for hosting us um and to the youth organizations who came out to support our effort. Um, in small groups, we focused on the effects of social media, peer pressure, home environment, and relationships and their effects on violence and safety. Uh, we are working to take what we heard in town hall and provide district leadership with formal recommendation of solutions from the town hall. Um, can we go to the next slide, please? Um, so our subcommittees are continuing to meet weekly. Each group will have an end-of-year product. Um, as you can see with adultism, the subcommittee is currently interviewing students and adults to understand that and try and make a workshop. Uh, and the code of conduct is um, hopefully at the end of the year, um, gonna make a workshop that's gonna be held throughout school communities. Um, the participatory budget meeting is gonna uh do a block party um, at the end of this year, and the mental health and social media um, subcommittee will be um, planning on incorporating mental health stations in our schools. Wow. So, can we go to the next slide? Um, okay, so, some of the upcoming events we have are, um, right now, we're partnering on with the with the community Ramadan if to talk to make a community Ramadan iftar event uh on Friday, April fourteenth from seven to nine. And from eight to nine, BSAC students will host a use space for Muslim young people. Also, on Tuesday, May second, BSAC is partnering with other BPS departments to host by night, a computer science seminar that opened to all BPS students in grade six through twelve. Um, and, um, lastly, this summer, it'll be the second summer that BSAC will host a six-week summer leadership program. Um, we're still working out the details. Um, additionally, the stu- the division of student service, student support services will also have a menu of summer programming being offered to keep BPS young people engaged throughout the summer. And hopefully, um, at the next update, I'll have more details about this. Um, anyway, that is my report, um, so, uh, yeah. Any questions?
Thank you. And thank you to all the BSAC students for their advocacy and dedication, and the committee looks forward to future updates. Any comments, questions from members before we move forward?
Um, yes, thank you, um, and just thank you for the great work that you're that you're leading. Uh, Diego, and uh, if you could, could you just speak a little bit more about the 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 leadership? Sort of academy, um, and sort of is it to help sort of funnel more people within BSAC to to look for positions of leadership? Um, just a little bit more context.
Diego, you're muted.
Sorry, guys, um, I, yeah, I'm pretty sure that's what it is, um. I didn't do it last year, but I have sort of an idea of what it is. Um, so it's kind of like a continuation, but a little bit different. Um, cuz it's gonna be in the summer, it's gonna be more time, and so we can uh get more, hopefully more work done, um. So, but, um, I think we, yeah, we should ask Denise to elaborate better than I can. So, um, okay, um, so, we're gonna apparently also do some community service uh during uh the summer as well.
Good evening, everyone. Hi, Diego, thank you. Um, yes, uh, so just to kind of elaborate a little bit, um, last summer, we were able to host a six-week summer leadership program for about twenty-five BPS students that was focused on restorative justice and healing, uh, we also focused on community building um, and various aspects of leadership as well as working with um community or other youth-serving community organizations. So, we're hoping to replicate some of that work again this summer. Um, it might be a little bit smaller than it has been in in years past because space is um, just an issue throughout the city for youth-serving programs. Um, but our hope is to serve at least fifteen to twenty young people um during this program. Um, and typically, the students do go from summer to school year, and so we do get that continuity of working with students. Um, you know, through the summer and then having them come in um during the school year as well.
Mr. O'Neil?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Maida, thank you for your presentation. Um, always delighted to hear an update on what's going on in BSAC, and I was struck as Dr. Alkins was about the leadership piece. I'm so glad we talked about that in more detail. I was also struck by the committee work. And I'm intrigued by how BSAC decided on those four subjects. And I bring it up for two reasons. One, um, student input is critical, right? And student input has been invaluable in a number of ways in policy that the district has made and this board has made, for example, around code of conduct. Uh, BSAC's involvement over the years in the revised code of conduct and then the app that BSAC put together for students to understand their rights and responsibilities on the code was critical in that. And so I applaud you for continuing to look at it and um, I I stress how important the value of student voice is, so please pass that message along to your fellow BSAC members. We listen and we want the input. And the second piece of that is, I noticed the focus on mental health. And that is so critical to get BSAC's leadership and guidance on that issue because no one is closer to how students are doing with their um social and emotional well-being right now than students and fellow students, right? Um, we really need your guidance and input through through BSAC on these issues and the district does. And I know we are awaiting any day now, the National Center for uh Community, what is it, CDC Center for Disease Control does the national survey that is, it's a two-year lag time, so they're gonna be coming out this spring with the survey in twenty, from twenty twenty-one that really focuses in on students' emotional health and mental well, mental health and mental well-being, but we know there were troubling signs, right? And so, BSAC, there's a real opportunity for BSAC to play a leadership role on this to this committee, meaning the school committee, and to the district overall. Um, and so I I I'm applauding you for doing that as one of the four subcommittees or committees. And when you talk about having mental health stations in each school, I'm intrigued by what you mean by that. And just want to encourage BSAC to really focus in on this and understand the value of your student voice, how it is taken seriously, and how you can help us on this critical issue right now.
So, um, I'm actually gonna pass this one off to Denise cuz I am not in that subcommittee, so I think Denise might have more info than I would have. Um, on what it's
Sure, so, the the subcommittees, um, some of them have come kind of organically from student, you know, student voice and student perspective, so the adultism group specifically, the mental health group specifically. Um, the participatory budgeting group was um kind of an opportunity that came um to us. And we had this um additional money to spend, and so the participatory budgeting team and the mental health team have been working closely together um, on really just ways for young people to have fun, um, and really enjoy themselves. And so as a part of um, this BSAC block party that we're hoping to to have, and the young people have been working really hard on um, is to have mental health um kind of stations throughout the event, so spaces where folks can write positive affirmations, um, spaces where people can do art, spaces where people can um, connect with each other, um, and so that has been an important part of the mental health subcommittee um work as well as um, working on uh professional development ways that um, our social workers and our counselors can build, you know, those really strong and authentic and real relationships with our young people. Um, and so the mental health group has, um, you know, thrown a bunch of different ideas out there, and so I think they're still trying to figure out what sticks. Um, but the idea around mental health stations in each school, I think our young people are still trying to figure out exactly what it is that they need as well, right? When we talk about mental health supports, it's not always just having that go-to person, but there are other aspects of it, and so um, the group is really working to figure out, um, you know, what are the important levers that young people really need in school spaces beyond people to talk to, um, that can really make a difference in their in their mental health. Um, and that might include social media campaigns, that might include apps where young people can connect with each other in a positive way. Um, I think they're still exploring what that means for them.
Thank you. Well, I just want to affirm the value of the voice and the desire to hear from those folks who are involved in our classroom every single day on what their advice is, so. I I hope you share that back to the committee working on it. Thank you.
Yes, and I have also connected with the chair and um some other folks that um, some of the subcommittee leaders would be happy to come and talk for a little bit more in depth about the work that they've been doing, so these committees are um, headed by young people on BSAC, um, and they would be happy to share um, a little bit more in depth because as Diego says, you know, he does sit here, he does it on our code of conduct committee as well.
Please slow down, Denise, slow down a bit.
Oh, yeah, so he does sit on kind of multiple um committees, so those young people are happy to come uh and share a little bit more in depth about what they've been um exploring in their subcommittees.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Alkins?
Oh, no, thank you for that clarification. I'm I'm also wondering, um, how BSAC is able to also bring in on not ex- not exclusively or to sort of take over the conversation or anything, but really to help frame some of their ideas in a in a facilitative way. So, for example, thinking about sort of the mental health stations that you were talking about to bring in, um, you know, an expert or two who can actually probably speak to some of the practices that either have been done in different contexts to help really um, help push the conversation from a space of con- idea building to action and activism even to some extent, if that's what the students feel that is the best direction for it. But um, but I'm also thinking that sometimes it's, you know, you don't necessarily have to um, replicate the wheel if if it already exists, um, and so sometimes. So I'm wondering just how much of that crosstalk that BSAC gets to, gets to do.
So we definitely have folks like come in and and workshop with the young people. We're working with the um Shaw, some folks from the Shaw Foundation right now. They've been supporting our mental health group, um, specifically. Um, and that's kind of where the idea of the the app and social media aspects have come in. But I think that work has somewhat morphed, right? Perhaps the young people are like, oh, that's not quite it. And so over time, um, they've kind of moved direction um towards um, some workshopping and some other ways, but um, you know, we are completely open to having folks come in and work with our young people. They love having um folks come in and do engaging workshops with the young people, and so um, if you have any ideas or any community connections, I welcome um that that information and that support and um, you know, would love to explore that with the committee and and beyond.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, I just have a quick question, um, what percentage of the schools are now represented on BSAC?
I don't have a percentage, but we have twenty of our um, of our um high schools or secondary schools represented. Um, you know, it is difficult to onboard young people at different parts of the year, and because many of our, all of our young people are paid um through the city of Boston, there are certain deadlines, right, and certain things that we have to meet. Um, and so it can kind of create a space where some folks are paid and some folks are not paid. Um, and so, um, we haven't really taken on new young people since we started. Um, you know, and and as I've shared with you, Chair, um, you know, I'm I'm the full-time staff person that supports BSAC. We're happy to be bringing on a coordinator um very soon, so we will have additional capacity. Um, but obviously, that does affect how how many young people I can have with me. So, right now, we're at forty young people from twenty different Boston Public um schools. Um, and so, of course, looking to recruit um strategically for the summer from our schools that we haven't had representation from, um, and that's some of the work that I'm doing right now. Um, and then also working as soon as the school year starts um, to do that recruitment in schools um as well to make sure we have full representation on the council for um next school year.
That's great, and and something else, and I know, again, this is an issue around staffing. Um, as many of our high schools become seven to twelves, um, how are we beginning to work with our seventh and eighth graders um in terms of, you know, I don't want to call it BSAC junior, but that introductory stages so that they get the full benefit of um being engaged and, you know, hopefully gaining more um opportunity and commitment to taking on some of these roles as they move into high school.
Yeah, it's definitely on my mind and on my radar. I know that um, some of my colleagues have, you know, been doing work around transformative mentoring and academic mentoring um, in the middle school space, in our middle grade space. Um, many of our middle grades, um, or our seven to twelves do have student government representatives from the lower grades that sit on their student governments as well. Um, but I think it's really, you know, building our our out our capacity and building out um our programming so that it fits what middle graders need in terms of leadership, um, and then that there's that continuity and that continuation of moving on um to represent your school as you move into those upper grades. So, it's definitely on my mind and on my radar. Um, and I, you know, I think it's a great opportunity. I mean, last summer, we took um rising ninth graders. So we had um fourteen-year-olds that were going into their freshman year of high school. So we were able to do that um with the flexibility that Success Link also gave us with hiring younger people um last year, so um, you know, so now we can hire fourteen to eighteen-year-olds and pay them for their time, which wasn't the case in the past, so. I just see opportunities, you know, just coming along as we go, and again, as we build out our staff and um, you know, build out our model that we will be able to incorporate working with our younger grades, whether that is as you said, some sort of like junior BSAC or, um, you know, some way that we can bring that leadership conversation to our middle grades, which I I I know is happening um in those spaces, but um, how can we support it on the central office side as well?
Great, great. Thank you so much. And again, Mr. Maida, thank you for all of your work. And particularly as BSAC is in this rebuilding phase of its existing. Thank you again for all of the work that you and the other BSAC students do, and we look forward to your updates in the future. Thanks. We'll now move on to general public comment. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents, caregivers, students and concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee, excuse me, but may this may be referred to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. We have fourteen speakers this evening. Each person will have three minutes to speak, and I'll remind you when you have thirty seconds remaining. Those who require interpretation services will receive an additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name, affiliation, and what neighborhood you are from before you begin. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from addressing individual school committee members or district staff. When I call your name, please raise your hand virtually in Zoom. Also, please make sure you're signed into Zoom with the same name that you use to sign up for public comments. That will allow us to identify you when it's your turn to testify. We'll begin this evening with Michael Heischman, followed by Carmen Arias Ortiz, Catherine Vitale, Suleika Soto, and Courtney Feeley-Carp. If you could please raise your hands. Mr. Heischman?
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right, Mike Heichman, Beja Dorchester. Wonderful things are happening in some of our schools. On March twenty-fifth, the Boston Teachers Union, Boston Education Justice Alliance, and many other organizations created a wonderful family-to-family conference attended by students, parents, and caregivers, educators, and community members. I attended the community schools workshop and was very impressed. The school department and the YMCA has a grant which has brought more resources into about twelve schools. You are once again coming up with a facility improvement plan. Every school should become a community school. I was blown away by the restorative justice workshop. Everyone sat in a circle and spoke while everyone listens. Instead of investing more in metal detectors, more policing, and using punishment and fear to control our children, invest in this powerful tool. In the words of our ancestor Mel King, "Love is the question and love is the answer." Restorative justice is part of our answer. It has increasingly become clear to me that our superintendent and Mayor Wu's appointed school committee are complicit in the retreat from the BPS becoming an anti-racist institution. Before taking office, Ms. Skipper on August twenty-fourth had received a letter from fifteen high-ranking retired BPS educators of color protesting against the targeting harassment and firing of anti-racist Black and Brown central office leaders. The public did not know about this until three whistleblowers, including myself, notified the community in October during public testimony. Ms. Skipper is in charge of the investigation. She selected the investigator and defined the parameters of the investigation. Normally speaking, this would be seening, would be seen as an outrageous conflict of interest. For Mayor Wu's appointees, this is acceptable. It is now April twelfth. Nothing new was reported today on this so-called investigation. Mayor Wu's appointed school committee continues to enable Ms. Skipper's cover-up. As I testified at our last meeting, the comparison of Dr. Cassilius's organizational chart with Ms. Skipper's is another example of the retreat from equity. Under the leadership of Dr. Grandson, the chief of equity and strategy, with the active support of Dr. Cassilius, the community equity roundtable had held thirty-nine meetings. Since Ms. Skipper took office, there has only been four meetings. Why? 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 Dr. Grandson is still the leader of the equity office. Look at the changes in the organizational charts. Dr. Grandson's office has been moved, his promotion, position demoted.
Ms. Heichman?
Almost done, and his budget cut. Equity has been defunded while white supremacy has been promoted. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carmen Arias Ortiz.
All right. Good evening, Superintendent Skipper and members of the school board. Um, my name is Carmen Ortiz. I'm better known as Carmen Arias by my Boston Arts Academy family. Um, I am part of the third graduating class of Boston Arts Academy. I do not currently live in Boston. I married in twenty-six, twenty-sixteen and moved to Cary, North Carolina. However, I did grow up in South Boston and I'm a product of Boston Public Schools. My entire family and many of my closest friends still call Boston home. While, uh, discussing the naming of a Boston Arts Academy theater is not part of today's agenda, this issue is too important for a one, for a one-day discussion. I'm just too important to me and many other of my Boston Arts Academy classmates to not start the conversation now. We all know that it's, it's human nature to desire honor and recognition. However, we must remember to give honor to whom honor is due. As many of you are, um, in a position of power, um, we're, when you are in a position of power, you're tasked with making important decisions. And we have a responsibility to be objective and thoughtful in the decisions that we make. Not only because it is the right thing to do, but also because it speaks of who we are. And more importantly, it models integrity to the Boston Public School students and families. I, I do understand that this, this is not always, um, easy or comfortable. As sometimes the right decision differs from that that is popular or expected. Today, I want to challenge you, members of the school board, to commit to honoring those women whom honor is due. To honoring two women who worked sacrificially, sacrificially for many years for a vision that many could yet to see. For the vision of an arts high school in Boston, for making Barz- Boston Arts Academy a reality. Without the vision and the hard work of Linda Nathan and Carmen Torres, there would be no Boston Arts Academy today. So I ask that we please put politics aside and do, and do the right thing, not just because Carmen and Nathan are the only two people who deserve to be recognized for what Boston Arts Academy is today, but also because I personally can attest that it was truly a privilege to attend high school while they were there. Their love and commitment for their students was genuine, and their leadership was second to none. Again, my ask today is that when this issue is on your agenda and you're tasked with making a decision, you choose to honor these two incredible women who impacted the lives of countless students in Boston. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Catherine Vitale.
Hi, my name is Catherine Vitale. I live in Dorchester and, um, I'd like every parent listening to this to ask themselves when and why we as Americans allowed it to become normal to drop kid, to drop our kids off to strangers for thirty to fifty hours a week. It has been become more and more evident over the past three years that by sending our kids to these government indoctrination centers, we're making them vulnerable to a world of abuse. We've allowed these strangers to force muzzles on their faces and restrict their breathing. We've allowed them to isolate our children, causing a massive wave of mental health issues. From vaccine clinics to mental health screenings, we've turned schools into health centers. Schools are supposed to teach academics, not screen, diagnose, and treat mental illness. Parents, I implore you to remove your children from these schools and find alternative ways to educate because the direction they're going is real bad, real fast. I could go on forever about why and how to homeschool your children. And if you'd like more information, please sign up at wethepeopleofma.org. As far as the school committee goes, what extra rights and privileges have you been awarded that you are not required to have these meetings in person? A virtual meeting is in no way comparable to a real meeting. You have the ability to lock us out, mute us, and kick us out of a virtual meeting, which you wouldn't be able to do if we were in person. You also have the chat disabled. If we were here in person, we wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to stop us from communicating with each other. Um, we're, unless we're on the panel like I am right now, we're not able to see who else is here. If the whole school committee's here, how many members of the public are here? And we're not able to communicate with each other because you have the chat disabled. These virtual meetings are a disgusting violation of parental rights in our U.S. and Massachusetts constitutions. You're not special and you all should be required to meet in person and come face to face with parents who you're supposed to be accountable to. Stop being cowards and return to in-person meetings. Um, I also want to ask for the record what the, um, youth health survey is, why kids are taking it, why you are asking children about their genders and their sexual orientations, um, and proposing ideas to them about killing themselves. I think that every parent should be aware of this and these surveys should not be given in schools. It's unacceptable. What's happening in schools is disgusting and you all should be ashamed of yourselves. That's all.
Our next speaker is Suleika Soto.
A little dark, but it's okay. As long as you guys could hear me.
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Suleika Soto and I am a BPS graduate, the parent of two BPS students and a resident of the South End. Words are good, intention is important, thoughts are important. But what are we actually doing to repair the harm done? While the racial equity planning tool is intended to address the persistent inequities that impact our students with the highest needs and has good words, intentions, and thoughts, the desired outcomes are never explicit explicitly framed to address the root causes, particularly for students and communities with the greatest needs, such as Black, Latinx, Asians, special education students, and multilingual learners. For example, comparing the, um, racial equity planning tools rubric to the community connections coordinators memo presented at yesterday's community equity roundtable fails to actually answer the questions. There is no racial equity analysis with this aggregated data included and fails to mention the terms Black, Latinx, Asian, special education, and multilingual learners in any of its answers. A solution would be to actually answer the questions and follow the rubric. And for this committee to carefully look at these proposals before pushing a yes vote in the name of equity. In my opinion, parent engagement has also been utterly disrespectful and at times intimidating at both the school and district level this year. This year, in too many district meetings, supposedly intended to be conversations and actually engage parents and community, the meetings have in fact consisted of parents being talked at, addressed with pre-written scripts by a large team of district employees that are texting each other and where many answers provided to important questions lack substance and data to back them up. As in the, this case with this committee. Furthermore, it is disrespectful for the administration and BPS to utilize vice principals and district-level employees to call Latino parents before testifying about their experience before this committee. This is an example of witness intimidation. Fortunately, those brave families still arrived to express their thoughts. Is this, is the district trying to hold administration accountable for what parents say at the district level when there is a lack of accountability for parent engagement at the school level? There are still many schools lacking interpretation during school site and parent council meetings, or let alone that submit required paperwork for Title I, which all the schools of BPS are Title I schools. To actually start to repair the harm, BPS should transform how it goes about parent engagement by first starting to implement shared decision-making and school site council manuals. Follow Title I requirements for engagement and do the paperwork. Look at school climate data to fix and start actually holding principals accountable for engaging parents and hold yourself accountable as well. We need an elected school committee. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Courtney Feeley-Carp, followed by Edith Bazil, Ruby Reyes, Michelle Carmel, and Deidre Manning. If you can please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Courtney Feeley-Carp?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi. Um, thank you, Chair Robinson, Superintendent Skipper, and members of the school committee. Um, I thank you again for making time and I, I don't want to waste too much time in this, but I do want to sort of um, give sort of a response to one of the prior commenters. I for one fully appreciate the opportunities that online remote meetings have as an accessibility feature through, uh, remote attendance as well as interpretation channels and other things that would be much more difficult to provide in person. And I appreciate I'm wholly consistent with the continuation of law to allow these things to happen. And I appreciate the opportunity that you continue to do so. And so just wanted to provide a second possibly more sane voice on that front. Um, I also wanted to just a nod to the prior commenter Suleika and all of the things that she just said around a lot of the needs that we are all feeling. Um, and I'm here to talk tonight about our community, our school, um, but I do think a lot of the, the systemic comments she made are applicable in, in our instance, as well as, as broader. And I, and I do want to amplify her um, important thoughts and comments. Um, you know, I think it comes as no surprise and I understand I was late logging in. We will incident with dinner that had to be remade. Um, but I understand there was some mention of a plan for the Henderson. So I apologize if there was some conversation that I'm not yet aware of, but we're here tonight. I think it's probably of no surprise, um, because really frankly, you know, we continue to see no response from the administration of our school. In fact, things to be trending in the wrong direction. Many of us have reached out to the district office trying to find other avenues to have licensing, um, sorry, job listing posted, remove a sub-separate listing. Um, but we, we have not seen that happen. We've also seen that there have been postings added for things like resource rooms, which for anyone who's in the special education world knows that is the first step in the wrong direction when you are doing inclusion for real and not in name only. And so the signs are there. And I think it's important to remember that our leadership is an interim appointment. The school parent council and the, the school community did not have a say in this appointment. Um, we do not have any knowledge yet how long this appointment will last.
There is
There are unique circumstances around this particular leadership role. Um, but we feel that it is important and to echo some of the comments earlier from the BSAC community and the importance of, of leadership work and our sort of justice, that there are harms in our community that need to be repaired. And if it is the decision of the superintendent to continue with the leadership at our school, that we would ask that specific interventions be done in a restorative way to come help us repair the harms. And we are, you know, since the last time we were here, there's been no
Excuse me, Ms. Feeley-Carp?
One. And we are here again because we are looking for more direct intervention um, before the school year is out while these important hirings are taking place and shaping the future of our school.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Edith Bazil.
Good evening and thank you so much. Madam Chair, Black families in the greater Boston area are increasing, but flee BPS at the highest rate. Why? Black students are concentrated in underperforming schools, denied access to high-performing schools, exam schools, and AP courses. Black students are disproportionately placed in segregated special education classes and alternative education programs and denied equitable access to vocational programming. Black students are disproportionately assigned to underfunded, understaffed, under-resourced schools that are disproportionately closed. Parents, students, and leaders who speak out about the closures are ignored, like the beloved P.A. Shaw. Black and brown leaders are sidelined, censored, silenced, and pushed out. BPS currently employs around seventy-eight safety offices and invested thirty million dollars in metal detectors and cameras. Violence prevention specialist positions were rebranded as community connector positions, which despite what is said, are still safety positions which will surveil and target Black and Brown students. That's more than one hundred approximately safety positions and only an increase of eleven to eleven restorative justice positions. The research says a heavy focus on surveillance does not increase safety. It reduces student engagement and we know we have student absenteeism problem. If the district used the racial equity planning tool, you already know that, but of course it was not used. This is not the vision of the honorable Mel Kaine that he had for Boston students, which he loved. It is also not the vision he had when he said, quote, "For all they've talked about improving city schools, we've had a system of low expectations," end of quote, that continues to be the problem. Superintendent Skipper said, "The district is working tirelessly to improve work worthy of Mel Kaine tonight." I asked, "Where is the evidence?" Every school does not have literacy coaches and reading specialists. BPS has a homegrown early childhood curriculum focus that is not evidence-based with more than a decade of failing results for Black, Latino, EL, and students with disabilities. When Black students struggle with literacy, they're more likely to be placed in a segregated special ed placement where they rarely receive reading interventions. There are far too many non-certified teachers and hundreds of teacher vacancies, yet BPS hires more central office positions that are completely disconnected from what school leaders and teachers need to support students. Why is OME been without a leader? Where is the Black, where are the Black and bilingual teachers that BPS needs? The ESF funds are just about gone, which states funding is not the problem. Vision and commitment are. Where is the focus on college and vocational options for Black and Brown students? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ruby Reyes.
Good afternoon. My name is Ruby Reyes and I'm a Georgetown resident and the executive director of the Boston Education Justice Alliance. As we approach Superintendent Skipper's eighth month on the job, just three short months from the end of the school year, BPS families have continued to wait for action-oriented leadership, transparency, community engagement, and equity. Superintendent Skipper is failing to implement the changes that BPS families continue to desperately need. BPS parent groups have been asking for better communication and authentic community engagement that thoughtfully incorporates the voices of parents, students, and educators. Claiming a commitment to family engagement, BPS parents found a calendar listing for conversations with Mary. Notifications had been sent to district parent groups. Notifications had not been sent out to district parent groups or through the BPS weekly update, which has gone, which has not gone out since December 2022. Parent groups shared it with their school networks only for the meeting to be abruptly canceled minutes before its flocked launch. In terms of community connections positions, the main concern is the student information sharing will not be taking place. In 2018, a child was deported because BPS information was being shared with the Boston Police Department. We know that there are few controls internal and external, as evident with the most recent exam school issue. Clearly, BPS central office cannot guarantee the protocols are insulated. Superintendent Skipper's excuses and deflections cannot justify the possibility of deporting yet another student. In the budget process, Beja urged for more detail and transparency. The BPS budget should not be about covering up Superintendent Skipper's failures, such as an executive staff too lazy to create detailed budgets or be able to provide answers to critical questions. The budget process is a place where resources can be distributed to areas, schools, and students with the most need as a real commitment to equity. The budget needs to be about meeting the needs of students and families. Even more disturbing though is that when parents signed up to give public testimony at the school committee meeting on March 22, some of those parents received calls from BPS administrators, including Deputy Superintendent of Equity and Community and Family Advancement Anna Tavares. These administrators were asking what these parents were going to give testimony about. BPS should not be seeking intel from impacted families or intimidating parents into not sharing their voices. BPS needs to be meeting their needs on a systemic-wide level and individual basis, not seeking a heads-up from families. The implication is that principals and administrators are being held responsible for what parents say in their testimony, which further feeds the already decaying culture of fear, rather than the supported team Superintendent Skipper claims to be fostering. We are only three short months away from the end of the school year. The few accomplishments we have seen are those that have been fought for by parents and advocates. Where are the results? Superintendent Skipper has coasted through a school year with families having little go for it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Michelle Carmel.
Hi, um, thank you very much for having me here to speak in the public comment section. I'm glad for the opportunity to do it. I was here last month testifying about the Henderson Inclusion School. I told you about classrooms in our school that don't have properly credentialed special educators. What I didn't tell you last month is that I have a child with a disability for whom the school has been transformative. We have great educators and staff in the building working hard for our children every day. I know the power of inclusion done well and I believe that my child deserves to graduate from this school. The parents who testified alongside me last month are the same parents who are constantly volunteering our time to build community and support the school in any way we can. I want to be really clear that we are not trying to tear down our school. We're trying to bring its problems to light to get real support from the district and the mayor's office to build it back to its former state. Our current students deserve that and our educators deserve that. Both before and since the last school committee meeting, our school has struggled with both internal and external dysfunction. For example, for the last 43 days since the 1st of March, the Henderson Inclusion School has posted misleading job listings for teachers in substantially separate settings. This is where students with disabilities are sequestered outside of the general classroom setting, which is the polar opposite of inclusion. I alerted the school administration 19 days ago about the misleading listing. After five emails, Zoom call, and phone call, the misleading postings persist. The problem is being blamed on communication issues with and delays within the Office of Human Capital, but it also speaks to the disarray in our building that's happening right now. It shouldn't have been me, a parent, who noticed the problem weeks after the problem had originated and started the initiative to get this, to get this fixed. Right now, at this moment, the incorrect listings are still posted, advertising for teachers in a substantially separate setting in our inclusion school. It's imperative that we correct these to ensure that the Henderson attracts qualified inclusion-oriented candidates to interview for these positions. It's prime hiring time now. It has been prime hiring time since the 1st of March and we're losing time here. What I'm wondering is how far up the BPS administrative chain does our community have to go before we reach a person who actually has enough power to pick up the phone and make something as simple as editing jobs actually happen? I implore you as members of the school committee and representatives of mayor's office to identify the person who has the power to help the Henderson and remind them of their responsibility because the Henderson needs real concrete support. We don't need a plan for the 23-24 school year. We need help now with concrete issues in our school. Um, I also want to mention that members of our board, I'm here as an individual. I'm not here representing my, the parent council.
Excuse me, Ms. Carmel. I'm afraid your three minutes are past. Thank you. Our next speaker is Deidra Manning, followed by Sean Nelson, Felicia Parsak, Jess Manna, Bethany Moffey, and Chanon Dendi Balbin. If you could please raise your hands virtually in Zoom. Deidra Manning.
Hello, everybody can hear me?
Yes, good evening.
Great, thank you. Thank you to the superintendent and the school committee members for the opportunity to speak before you. I was one of five parents who spoke before the school committee last month about concerns impacting the Henderson community, most notably for families with children with atypical abilities. I appreciate the recent announcement that I heard at the beginning of the meeting that the central office is making an effort to address some of the concerns raised in the last meeting and recently published in the Boston Globe. I would like to say that this effort needs to include families and initiatives to reach them must be expansive. Just to give you an example of why I believe this is important, before the last meeting, I reached out to a family who I knew their son was not receiving the type of services that he's supposed to and I asked them if they would be able to speak before the school committee during the public comment period. Unfortunately, the mom had to work and the son requires a very long series of interventions every evening and the father needed to do those. So this family and many others who are faced with challenges with children who have health concerns and intellectual challenges can't participate in a way that others can. I feel it's important that the school committee and superintendent understand that we need to stand up and do things for these families. Their lives are so challenging as it is. Subsequently, a meeting with the superintendent for the BPS community at large, where Henderson parents had hoped to be heard, was not held without notice of its cancellation. I did hear the superintendent, I believe, say earlier today with this 90-day plan that she had reached out to the Henderson parent council to sort of get some information. I don't know how quickly this plan came together, but I can say I used to be involved with the parent council for five years. In general, they don't have very many families who do participate and I think it's gotten even worse with the interim leader because there's no collaboration with the parent council. Their concerns are dismissed and their initiatives are not elevated. I would recommend as part of this plan, that I was grateful to hear the superintendent has initiated, include a community-wide notification so that at least the families who have been speaking before the school committee could be involved as well as many other parents who have concerns but have either felt frustrated or not heard. I also strongly recommend that a retired independent leader be hired to lead the Henderson out of this mess. A year and a half ago, I advocated for an interim leader who was independent after our principal was assaulted and knocked unconscious. Unfortunately, they picked a very young person who didn't have any experience as an administrator and that person left for a family opportunity in another state. The new interim leader is a principal who is hired to cover for leaves, a medical leave or maternity leave, et cetera, and this person does not necessarily have a vested interest in inclusion or what we're doing at the Henderson. The Henderson needs a leader independent of the central office chain of command who is solely dedicated to bringing the Henderson out of this crisis. I just want to close. Give me just a few more seconds. Society should be judged on how its most vulnerable members are treated. BPS, especially its leaders, are failing the children, family, staff, and teachers at the Henderson. Please step up and please get a truly independent person who can help us repair our school to the really wonderful place that it was previously. And I forgot to mention, I'm a Georgetown resident and a parent of a Henderson student. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sean Nelson.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, my name is Sean Nelson, Boston resident, born and raised, taxpayer. I have come onto this meeting to address my concerns to the council. My also issue is that you are all appointed, not elected by the people. So you bigly must do the bidding of Michelle Wu, who typically does not listen to the people that elected her into office. Secondly, it's another concern I have is these virtual meetings that you have, that they work for you and not for the people. As stated before, you guys have the ability to kick off people who don't agree with you, may say things that you're uncomfortable with, and boot them off very easily. I've seen that many times in other city council meetings and board school meetings across this country where you don't want to hear from the parents or the taxpayers that you are accounted for, that pay your paychecks, so you can boot them off. While sitting on this meeting, listening to you talk, I wanted into your section and I saw that the chat has been disabled. So why are you disabling the chat, not allowing the community and other parents and other people who may share some thoughts and some ideas to meet and talk? Because you wish to silence people that disagree with you or the agenda of Michelle Wu. So I believe that should be taken off. The only people that should be on virtual is the public who are not able to actually come and meet you. You all should be in a one-room altogether, facing the people that you, who do pay you by their tax dollars and confront them. Just like before, it's very cowardly that you're all behind these virtual screens and not able to know who and how many people are on here watching this. I've been on here since 5:00 and I can see that it's very restrictive for us to see who else is on here unless you are talking right now. And that's very disturbing. It just shows you, you guys will talk about equity and inclusion only when it makes you look good. But when it comes to the public, well, we're elected, we're appointed. We don't really have to listen to you. We'll say all these little, good little words to make us look like we actually care, but you really don't. I can tell by your, you know, background screenshots, you're all at home where you should be dressed in business casual and suits at it and facing the people and should be able to answer simple questions. Secondly is school community safety. Just the other week, you had a radio disturbing information where a teacher locked out police when a suspect who stabbed another student outside blocked them from coming in to do their jobs, endangering all the other students in that school. You should have police officers, armed security in there helping you with these students and make sure they're safe. These teachers do not get paid enough to deal with some of these unfortunately misbehaved children. I've seen too many fights where teachers are getting knocked in the head, being slammed to the ground because some of these students have not been taught discipline at home and they bring their troubles into the school.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Thank you.
Uh huh, thank you.
Felicia's not in the meeting, so our next speaker will be Jess Manna.
Sorry, I was on mute. Good evening, everyone. I am, my name is Jess Manna. I'm a Rosendale resident and Sumner parent. First, I'd like to thank the school committee for their virtual meetings. As a single parent, I would never be able to attend if the meetings were in person. Having virtual meetings increases access and is a more equitable way to hold meetings that impact such a large community. I have never seen a speaker be kicked off at the many virtual Boston school committees I have attended. As usual, I am here tonight to discuss the Sumner and Philbrick merger. First, you know, as we have been discussing in the past, the community engagement has continued to be inauthentic. The recent community meeting for the Sumner and Philbrick merger was great, but it fell short of authentic community engagement. It was not advertised very far in advance. It was just advertised a few business days in advance because BPS refused to confirm the date, even though the date had been chosen weeks before. And because of that, the meeting participants were not representative of our community. 60% of our community is Spanish-speaking and there were only two people on the meeting that required interpretation services. During the meeting, we kind of dove into the details without zooming out and giving newcomers a proper overview of what decisions have already been made and what is being asked of the community. The meeting was also cut off fairly quickly and no follow-up has been sent. And the meeting was cut off just as groups were getting into a productive discussion and even though the groups asked for more time, that was not allowed. Most decisions regarding the merger have been made for us and not with us and that continues to be true. Our Spanish-speaking community deserves a meeting in Spanish, which we have been promised multiple times and that date has still not been set. And meeting minutes for the design team and the community meeting have not been distributed, which was also promised to us. At this point, it doesn't feel like BPS is invested in anything more than performative engagement with our community, which actually seems like more work than authentic engagement, but okay. And so all we can do is hope that BPS has learned from this process and will do better for the murders that come after ours. We have several requests not related to community engagement, but given that our voices have not been heard on community engagement, we have to assume they will not be heard regarding the resources we feel our community needs after the merger. So we are here tonight asking the school committee to ask BPS to commit to some harm mitigation tactics prior to voting on the Sumner and Philbrick merger. We are not asking for no vote on the merger. We are asking for a commitment of quantifiable actions BPS will take to ensure our communities have the support we need, such as three to four social workers, at least two nurses, at least two family liaisons, and expanded administration to help with the transition, such as two principals for the first year and the possibility of becoming a dual-language school. and the possibility of becoming a dual-language school. As we have said from the beginning, we are in this for equity for all. So I would be negligent in that commitment if I did not mention what is happening to the Sean Taylor communities. They are being silenced with a threat that
Ms. Moffey, thank you.
Do MSAA funding if they don't quietly agree to the merger.
Ms. Moffey. Thank you, I've read your pastor three minutes.
Yeah, it's extremely unfair to the
Thank you, Ms. Manna. Our next speaker is Bethany Moffey.
Hello, hello Chair Robinson and Ms. Skipper and the school council, school committee. Thank you again for the opportunity to hear us out. Madam Chair, I'm here today, I testified one of the families who testified last month from the Henderson and I'm here again today to, just to amplify the situation that's going on at the Henderson. I want to amplify Suleika's comments specifically about intentionality by the district engaging families. Courtney Feely-Carp's comments specifically, what is the district's intention for leadership next year at the Henderson? And how will families be included? Michelle Carmel's comments about, I believe my daughter should be graduating from the Henderson. And I, I hope that, you know, I, I hope that school committee and the district can hear us. I didn't clearly write out a whole bunch of my thoughts. I really just wanted to be in the moment and say, we don't want to be here testifying every single month. We are at our wits' ends. We don't know what to do or who to turn to. We come here, no one from school committee has reached out to any of the five families that testified last month. One of the families said that earlier, I'm so sorry I logged on late and I didn't get to hear it, but we heard that Ms. Skipper had reached out to the parent council. I might be mistaken, you did not say that, okay, then I won't even, I won't even address that. But we're waiting for, we're waiting for someone to address us intentionally. So since we testified last month about the state of inclusion at our school, we are hearing stronger rumors about resource rooms, receiving job postings for sub-separate positions and resource room positions. We continue to ask leadership for clarity on what it's about. And we brought it to the district's attention several times. We're getting no satisfactory response. We even heard that the district visited the school after we testified last month. But families didn't hear anything about this. Families were not engaged. If that is the case, we don't even know if it's the case. We requested a plan for how the Henderson will be handled. No family has heard about that. We, we would love for school committee to intentionally reach out and specifically engage with the Henderson families. Have conversations with the community rather than hear it here as testimony. Again, none of us want to be here every single month testifying this. We are desperate, that's why we're here over and over again. I do hope you can hear us. This time, I hope that you reach out to the community. I hope that you share plans with the community, with, with parent council, with parents. Send us surveys, have meetings specifically for us, we'll all show up. Thank you for, for allowing us to testify again.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Shannon, is not signed into the meeting. So Chair Robinson, that concludes our speakers for general public comment.
Chair Robinson?
Yes.
Not typical, but I think because several of the parents from the Henderson had not had the opportunity to hear the update, I'm just going to ask Dr. Eccleston to come on, since he's been the person that's been helping to support this piece and just actually be able to provide an update on several of the concerns that they expressed because I don't want them to go home tonight without hearing that.
Yeah, thank you Superintendent, thank you members of the public for these really important concern. A few things I just want to say, just immediately, just to say at the top. The Henderson is committing to ensuring that the legacy of inclusion continues at the school. There are no plans, I want to be exceptionally clear on this. There are no plans for any type of substantially separate classrooms, any sort of resource rooms. These are errors in the postings of things relative to things that came out of the Office of Community Capital. And I am going to work with the school superintendent, with the school principal and members of OHC, first thing tomorrow morning at 7:30, to resolve these issues, to make it up as is very clear. I did go out to the Henderson after the last meeting, did have an opportunity to meet the faculty, did have an opportunity to group with the school leader to ensure that the commitment to inclusion was there, both in strategy and investments, both now and into the future for the school. That will resolve these issues and we will continue, obviously, to ensure that we are doing right by this school. I will also ensure in partnership with regional superintendent Jean Roundtree, that we need with both the site council and the larger community to talk through these issues. I think there's some good suggestions that were proffered this evening from the local community to move us forward, but we will be interested in doing most internal dialogue with the community to tackle the issues that will be raised, to make sure that we're making in the effort of continuous improvement, making progress in those areas, lots of personal responsibility and working with members in the BPS team.
And Dr. Eccleston, I did share in my report the additional resources that we are allocating to be able to address some of the gaps that we're seeing at the Henderson. So I don't know if you want to just quickly share a few of those, since some of the parents didn't get to hear that.
Yeah, I apologize, I don't have that, I was just coming with a matter of community reasons, I don't have that information top of mind, but there are a number of significant investments that I made in the FY '24 budget to support inclusion. I'd be happy to ensure that I'm prepared to have that conversation with the community and hopefully they'll have any details if we have them in front of you.
Yeah, I think if I, if I remember right, school psychologist, I think, you know, we spoke about special, special education administrator relative to inclusion, family liaison given the lower and the upper campus. From a material standpoint, librarian and library, I believe, at the upper with materials and at the lower campus, additional materials for literacy room. I believe an adjustment counselor. And then the couple of positions which sound like they were posted incorrectly, which would support inclusion, but were posted as resource room. So there's, there's also, along with the plan of support and training, there is, I can also say that the Henderson is one of the schools that we will be working in partnership with the city, with Air dollars to provide additional clinical support and trauma-informed training. Henderson is one of those schools. So I think that there is, I think the parent voice has been important. I think that the Henderson's had a long journey for the last couple of years. And, you know, it's, it's on us as the district to help support and bring some stability to it with Dr. Eccleston, with Jean Roundtree in support. And so I, you know, we'll work to get that communication out to parents now that the plan has been finalized and then offer an opportunity to be able to meet with parents as well. Thank you, Dr. Eccleston, and thank you Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Thank you, Dr. Eccleston, for coming on. And thank you to those of you who spoke this evening and shared your perspectives. Your testimony is very important to us. We have five action items this evening. Three collective bargaining agreements with the Boston School Police Superior Officers Federation and Lunch Hour monitors, and two fiscal year '23 supplemental appropriation requests to support the cost of those agreements. You'll recall that last meeting, Labor Relations Director Jeremiah Hassan presented highlights of these agreements to the school committee. I'll now turn it over to the superintendent for final comments.
I think, thank you Chair, I just, we're very proud of continuing to work to bring our labor contracts in line to recognize the hard work of all the, all of the staff that work in BPS and have over the pandemic. This is a further step toward bringing the 14 units that were out back into compliant, you know, compliance of timeline, but also, I think, going forward so that we're now staggering and actually really work across the table with labor in a creative way for how to be able to best support our schools and our students. So I want to thank Jeremiah and his team for that, that support and that, that hard work. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Jeremiah.
Superintendent, thank you for the hand words. We appreciate your support as always, committee members. We also appreciate your support and I just publicly want to thank the bargaining teams for both the superior officers and the lunch hour monitors on working together and getting these deals done. We're optimistic both about these agreements and our relationship moving forward with these groups. I'll turn it to the committee if you have any questions. If not, I just reiterate our recommendation to vote in favor of these agreements and the supplemental appropriation requests needed to fund them in the fiscal year of 2023.
Thank you. I'll now open it up to the committee for any final questions, comments. No one? Dr. Allkins?
Yeah, I just want to echo the sentiments that this is great progress, I would say, like along, along these lines, is to make our contracts current. And in some ways, it's all, it's almost, not even almost, it's disconcerting to say that, like, we, we have to keep things current in, in this way, but I'm happy that we are able to do this. That said, I think it'd be important for me to say that it shouldn't stop here as we're looking at the, the number of contracts in terms of being able to make sure that the people that are working in BPS are being paid adequately and commensurate with the cost of living that it takes to be in a city like Boston. So I think this is also a charge for us just to continue advocacy at the level of the city to invest more for the, for, for the staff of BPS. And, you know, as such, that translates into a better educational experience. So thank you all for the work that you all are doing.
Thank you. There's nothing further, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement for successor collective bargaining agreement between the Boston School Police Superior Officers Federation and the school committee for the period July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021, as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Allkins?
Yes.
Mr. Fredad Hernandez. Ms. Lopera. Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran. Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement for the successor collective bargaining agreement between the Boston School Police Superior Officers and Federation and the Boston School Committee for the period July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024, as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Allkins?
Yes.
Mr. Fredad Hernandez. Ms. Lopera. Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran. Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the fiscal year '23 supplemental appropriation request in the amount of $68,769 to support the memorandum of agreement for successor collective bargaining agreement for the period July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024, between the Boston School Police Superior Officers Federation and the Boston School Committee as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Allkins?
Yes.
Mr. Fredad Hernandez. Ms. Lopera. Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran. Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement for successor collective bargaining agreement between the Lunch Hour monitors, American Federation of State County and Municipal Employees, AFSCME 93, and the Boston School Committee for the period September 1, 2020 through August 31, 2023, as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, please call the roll.
Dr. Allkins?
Yes.
Mr. Fredad Hernandez. Ms. Lopera. Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran. Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. And finally, I will now entertain a motion to approve fiscal year '23 supplemental appropriation request in the amount of $206,006 to support the memorandum of agreement for successor collective bargaining agreement between the Lunch Hour monitors, AFSCME 93, and the Boston School Committee for the period September 1, 2020 through August 31, 2023, as presented. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Allkins?
Yes.
Mr. Fredad Hernandez. Ms. Lopera. Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran. Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you. Our first and only report this evening is a transformation schools update. Before I turn it over to Mike Saban, Executive Director of School Transformation, I will invite the superintendent to give introductory remarks. I'd also like to remind everyone to please speak at a slower pace to assist our interpreters. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I, I just, I, I'll keep it brief, but this is critical work. When we think about the transformation schools, it's almost like a small part of the district. And so really, the team under Mike's leadership, in, under the schools division, I think has done an incredible job this year leveraging the regional network model, bringing resources into the transformation schools. And I think, as you'll see from the presentation tonight, there's certain data markers that are showing progress. Those markers will obviously expand as time goes on and we get, you know, MCAS results and other kinds of assessments. But I, I think in general, what we're seeing is concentrating resource and really focusing on tier-one instruction practices in those transformation schools with the appropriate resources is, is in, you know, and intentionality around chronic absenteeism. These are the things that are coming to bear to, to create positive results for our students. So I know Mike and his team have done just an incredible job preparing for tonight. They're very proud of the work as they should be. And so that, with that, I'll turn it back over to Director Saban.
Thanks so much Superintendent Skipper, Chair Robinson, and school committee members. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to share an update on BPS transformation schools. So my message today is, is this. Thanks to the hard work of our school leaders and of course, our students and families and our educators. We are seeing We are seeing multiple signs of progress in our transformation schools. We also see ongoing and urgent needs and we're pulling together plans and resources to keep the improvement going. The format of tape today's presentation illustrates the continuous improvement approach used by all of our schools. And we can go to the next slide. Targets and improvement strategies are set in three priority areas. Equitable literacy, climate and culture, and attendance. Progress monitoring and strategic adjustments continue throughout the year. Just as each school leader presents and shares their quality school plan update with their community, I'm happy to share a quarterly update for the whole network of transformation schools in these three areas. So before we start, we should review some vocabulary. Um next slide, please. Transformation is a Boston Public Schools term given to any school rated below the tenth percentile in the Department of Education Accountability System. That percentile is calculated for each school through a formula. That includes MCAS scores, MCAS growth, access scores, and attendance. And for high schools, mass core completion and graduation rate. Transformation schools may be added annually. And four new schools are actually being added now based on their twenty twenty-two percentile. With the addition of Perkins, Tobin, Snowden, and BCLA McCormick Schools, there are now thirty-two BPS transformation schools. And the full list is provided in the appendix. The demographic summary on this slide, which you have seen before and is from October data reinforces that our transformation schools educate a larger percentage of low-income students, a larger percentage of students with disabilities, and a larger percentage of multilingual learners than our non-transformation schools. Our transformation schools also educate a significantly higher percentage of Black and Latinx students. These are very important schools. So we'll move now to updates in the three priority areas. After I present priority one equitable literacy and priority two climate and culture, Greenwood K to eight dual-language school principal Antonelli Mejia will bring our improvement efforts to life with some school-level examples. So priority one is equitable literacy. I have shared data before that shows an achievement gap between transformation schools and non-transformation schools. The gap starts in kindergarten and continues through the grade levels. Addressing this literacy gap is an urgent district priority. We are working toward improved literacy every day in every school by implementing high-quality curriculum, supporting teachers with instructional coaching and professional development, and supporting students with tiered instruction and expanded opportunities for inclusion. So are we making progress on priority one? Our classroom observation data from our instructional rounds says that we are. During our quarterly rounds, teams of school and district staff visit classrooms together, observing teaching and learning in action. We observe students reading, student writing, student discourse, looking for evidence of engagement with grade-level standards and with complex and enabling text. So far this year, teams of observers have visited over one thousand one hundred classrooms in transformation schools. One thousand one hundred classrooms is a lot. We're very proud that our improvement efforts in the transformation network and the whole district are rooted in the actual classroom. Excuse me. This graph in front of you shows steady progress over the course of the year in most areas of equitable literacy. We feel confident that this steady shift in instructional practice will translate into improved student learning. The second priority area relates to school climate and culture. Last quarter, we shared teacher surveys and observed an increase in positive teacher ratings of professional learning and professional relationships. This quarter, I will share some promising data from our student surveys. We give student surveys twice per year, and these surveys are one way that student voice informs our improvement efforts. Grade three to five student surveys from the late fall show a strong student sense of belonging and engagement in our transformation schools, similar to non-transformation schools. One area for concern, our elementary transformation school students report higher levels of safety worry than other students. Student survey responses from secondary school students have a much lower overall positive response rate for all students across the district, as you can see. Compared to non-transformation schools, transformation school students actually report a higher level of classroom engagement and a similar sense of school belonging. Those are perhaps unexpected positives. But again, our transformation school students share greater concerns about school safety. School safety is clearly an area for further attention and action. So before moving on to our attendance priority, I would like to introduce Antonelli Mejia, the wonderful first-year principal of the Greenwood K to eight dual-language school. We are all very excited about the work Antonelli and his team are doing at the Greenwood. Antonelli?
Good evening, everybody. I don't think I can put my video on. Can you see me? Good evening, everyone and members of the school committee. Thank you for the opportunity to be here in this space to share a little bit about the work that we're doing here. Excuse me. Um at the Sata Greenwood. My name is Antonelli Mejia, and I am the first principal. Before that, I am also a student, a former BPS student, and I have served families and students in many capacities. As a teacher, as a community field coordinator, a counselor, and an assistant principal at the Mario Manis. As a community, we at the Greenwood understand that transformation takes time, and yet the work that needs to be done, it is very urgent. So we have a lot of opportunities, but also a lot of risk as we navigate. What is the right thing to do for our students? This belief center our work since the very beginning of the year when we adopted the culture of achievement research from Dr. Teresa Perry. This work really pushes us to build a culture for all the students, especially students of color who have been historically marginalized and have access to high-quality learning opportunities every day. We can go to the next. In order to embark in this journey, we knew that there was a lot of capacity building that we, the adults, had to do. This work pushes us to adjust our practices and unlearn traditional pedagogy that may not have been conducive to meeting the diverse needs of our students. As we know, transformation requires us to face both technical and adaptive challenges. We've made a lot of intentional movements to create learning conditions to collaborate. And as you can see in the data, we have made some improvements toward our professional learning goal this year. Learning is a part of our cycle of improvement, and most of this learning has been focused on the consistent implementation of a fully curriculum for literacy across all grade levels. This has created common language and expectation for what strong literacy instruction should look like at our school. Additionally, we were able to meet and in some ways exceed our target around classroom rigorous expectations and the sense of belonging for our students. While they continue to be priority areas in our school, we are proud of the work that is happening and the small wins that we can celebrate today. We can go to the next slide. Priority one in our improvement plan is centered in improving our tier-one instruction to teach all the students, no matter the language they speak or they're learning demands. Our goal is to build students by literacy skills and the functions of language in each lang- um English and Spanish. While this data shows that students are performing below grade-level expectations in first and second grade, it is important to know that this is the first year that this cohort of first graders is learning English literacy explicitly. And that this year's second graders did not receive English explicitly last year. This was due because of a previous language model. This year, we shifted some aspect of our language model to ensure that students were receiving explicit language in both languages. And we are starting to see some progress between the beginning and the year, as you can see. List, I wanted to highlight the tremendous growth that our kindergarten students made in Spanish as they exceeded expectations with an increase of twenty-eight percent. Similarly, our second-grader students, they met the projected um target in the mid-year assessment. Our work to support students in the second grade remains a priority, especially to those students who are new to the country, to make sure that they receive the supports that they need to be successful. Consistency in our school practices has led to academic success in our middle school as well. As you can see, all of our students in middle school exceeded the assessment target in English in the mid-year. And the students in third, fifth, and eighth grade exceeded those expectations in the Spanish as well. This is a result of all the hard work, all the effort, extra hours that our teachers are putting into planning and improving their tier-one instruction, but also the collaboration of families in all the way that students are also demonstrating. We are proud of the progress that we're seeing, and we remain hopeful that we will continue to transform and counter the narrative that society has put in our students. We believe that our students are so much more than these scores, and we will continue to find ways to highlight the different aspect our community is transforming in addition to the improvement in test performance. As a first-year principal, this has now been an easy journey, but I have an amazing team and a great community of educators who come each and every day committed to maintain the promise that we make to all of our families every day. That is to keep their child safe and learning in a positive and welcoming environment. I also want to take this opportunity to thank our academic superintendent Natalie Ake, and the folks at the District Transformation Division, because they have provided us with a lot of support this year. Personally, I think that the shift that they made into the original support model has made a huge difference. And it will continue to support our district in moving towards a more inclusive and more cohesive district amongst all the schools. We are really excited because we're already seeing some small wins in the achievement of our students. But this is just the beginning, and we have a lot of learning that is ahead of us. So I hope I can come back and share that with you in the future as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Antonelli. I think we can hear in your voice that it's hard work uh being a first-year principal. And we're so excited to watch the growth that you and your team have already launched so far this year. So back to our three priorities, priority three is attendance. Specifically, the goal of reducing chronic absenteeism. Chronic absenteeism is an attendance level below ninety percent or eighteen days absent in a given school year. As you heard from Brian Mark's presentation at the last school committee meeting, we are seeing some progress in reducing high chronic absenteeism rates in our transformation schools. Next slide, please. This chart summarizes the situation with chronic absenteeism. Now remember, lower bars are better in the case of chronic absenteeism. The pair of bars on the left show that the rate of chronic absenteeism in non-transformation schools was lower this year and last year than the rate in transformation schools, the bars on the right. We can see, however, in the right-hand bars that the improvement in chronic absenteeism in transformation schools from last year to this year has been five percentage points, dropping from fifty to forty-five percent of students in comparison to a two-point drop in non-transformation schools. This is an early sign of progress, but both rates are too high, and of course, we need to keep improving. As Brian also mentioned a few weeks ago, it is important to pause and celebrate some remarkable improvements in certain schools. King, Lee K to eight, Ellis, Higginson Lewis, and Blackstone have all shown a decrease in absenteeism over the past year of more than ten percentage points. That is a lot. Seven of our transformation schools have chronic absenteeism rates lower than the average of non-transformation schools. Philbrick, Orchard Gardens, Yumana, Frederick, Chittick, Gru, and Mason. That's the result of a lot of hard work at those schools. As with student literacy, we have proud examples of excellence and improvement within the transformation network. So far, this presentation has summarized the performance of our transformation schools in their three priority areas. And one aspect of our transformation office mission is to support each individual school in implementing these quality school plan priorities for their school. Another part, however, of the transformation office mission is to strengthen central office supports for all high-needs schools. We talked in the fall and you have heard throughout the year about the regional structure and how that structure is providing improved support to schools. Today, I want to focus on another strategy. Our partnership with the Office of Human Capital to support recruitment and hiring during a very challenging labor market. We have been studying vacancy patterns in the district and can see that each year we have certain schools with high numbers of vacancies. It turns out that these vacancies are somewhat concentrated in transformation schools. This table of the number of vacancies for next year shows that fifteen of the twenty BPS schools with the most posted job vacancies for next year are transformation schools. The Office of Human Resources, the Division of Schools, and the Transformation Office are collaborating to provide a range of extra supports for recruitment and hiring in transformation schools. Strategies have included the early posting of certain positions, direct office of human capital assistance and teacher license renewal, the use of tag grant funds to provide certain schools with hiring help, and a range of ongoing efforts to match candidates with transformation schools. So how's it going? OHC has developed an outstanding tracking dashboard so we can track hiring in real time on a daily basis. Progress is slow, but steady. As of April third, as shown on this slide, approximately seventeen percent of transformation school vacancies had a name submitted for hire. District-wide, the percentage was eighteen percent. I checked the dashboard today and we are up to twenty-four percent of jobs filled or submitted for hire in transformation schools from seventeen percent last week. Nothing is more important than getting the best possible educators into our high need schools. And we look forward to continuing this partnership with OHC around recruitment and hiring. So there is so much more information I would love to share, but that is enough for tonight. There's an appendix to your slide deck with some additional details. This concludes the presentation and we welcome your questions and comments.
Thank you, Mr. Sevin, and also Mr. Mahia. Thank you very much for your presentation. I'd like to open it up now to committee for questions. Mr. O'Neill.
Sure, I'll go a little out of turn if that's okay with Dr. I was waiting for Dr. Alkins and Ms. Polanco Garcia, but thank you both for the presentation and I'm particularly interested in the chronic absenteeism data and the work that's been done. And we did discuss it a bit at the last meeting when we were looking at it overall, but you know, when I have a school principal here, Mr. Mahia, and thank you. And by the way, what school did you attend as a BPS student? I'd love to hear that whole history.
Brighton, Brighton High School.
Oh, Brighton High School. Excellent. Great. So I love that. And you know, all the different roles that you had. So thank you for sharing that. So I'm interested to hear, I didn't notice the Sarah Greenwood on the list of attendance, you know, what the attendance there, but I'm interested in hearing from you as a school leader. What is working now? What were the, you know, what was the low hanging fruit that you were able to do to help move the needle? And then what are the real challenges to really make a substantial difference in chronic absenteeism? Even to get to the level of the non-transformational schools, as Mr. Sevin said, we still have a long way to go. Those numbers are way too high because let's face it, that is such a, if the students aren't in the classroom, if we haven't transported them there safely, if it's not a clean, safe school, if they're not fed, the social emotional health, you know, all, all the, all of those contribute to a student learning, being in the best place to learn, right? And issue number one is having them go to school. So help me out, please, Mr. Mahia, what, Principal Mahia, what has worked, right? What was, what was a low hanging fruit? And then what are the real challenges in front of you? And, and maybe Mr. Sevin, you could then chime in with, you know, how we're thinking about those more systemic challenges.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. O'Neill, and I apologize for my voice, losing my voice. So I think in terms of the work that we've done here around attendance, the implementation of clear systems and routines that have led to partnership with families was something that has been very consistent. We created an attendance team that is now conducting more consistent meetings with families. We are thinking about what are some of those additional challenges, but also having even a parent meetings that are just targeted for, for those attendance. I think that the main challenge is that unfortunately, the students, at least in our school, that remained make absent are the students that already have a history, right? So we continue to collaborate with the district support as well because we are able to collaborate with the families to make some accommodations or provide additional support such as like, you know, a lot of our students experiencing homelessness and they do have to go to a shelter that is far away and that is a challenge. And oftentimes they do need to be absent for a few days and that adds, add ups to the chronic absenteeism data in, in that piece, right? But I think that the attendance team has created additional resources for those families. And what we've done is that we've sort of created assistance so that our family liaison also sits in that attendance meeting so that they can collaborate with families, myself, the assistant principal, even the nurse, so that we have more information around what are the motives for those absences to make sure that we know how to support the families. I think that is one of the areas that we continue to prioritize because we see that from last year to now, our numbers, I think, have increased, have decreased, but not to the extent that we would want it to see as well.
Thank you. That's helpful.
And I'd love to just add on a little bit, just looking at the data itself. Greenwood has gone from thirty-nine percent down to thirty-five. So they have shown significant improvement from that February to February. And the non-transformation school average is thirty-three. So they're getting close. And I, I think what Antonelli described to you is the strategy we want schools to be using. They have a team in place that's monitoring attendance on a daily basis. They're creating, excuse me, strong relationships with students and families to emphasize the importance of attendance. They're creating incentives for students to come. They're doing outreach when students don't come and then they're continually monitoring how it's going and implementing new, new experiments and new strategies. All across the country, we know this is a really tough problem to take on. In the, in the K to eight schools, we've seen that eighteen of the nineteen schools you may have seen in the appendix of the transformation schools have improved. So I think the strategies are working well in the lower grades. It appears to be harder in the secondary schools. Only five of the nine are ahead of last year. So it seems that the younger students are bouncing back better from this change in attendance habit. It's more of a challenge with the older students.
Mr. Sevin, that's exactly what I was going to ask as a follow-up. How do that number of effectively a third of our students district-wide be chronically absent? How does that compare, number one, to pre-pandemic? And number two, how is that compared to other large districts across the country? Are they seeing higher numbers, lower numbers, you know, and, and what are some, and I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I ran out of my five minutes. So I'm glad to hold that to a follow-up round.
The, the, um, excuse me, I can't speak specifically to the national numbers, though I know they're much lower. But compared to Boston pre-COVID, it's significantly higher. So the, the, the averages were around fifteen to twenty percent chronically absent. And now we're seeing numbers in the thirties. So it's not double, but it's a good fifty percent higher. And it's going to, I, I think we all know that it's going to take a lot of work to work that back down, but we are seeing movement in the direction we want to go. It just takes a lot of work.
Yeah, Chair, I was just going to add that this was a major conversation at the Council of Great City Schools among the superintendents. Every district is struggling with this and they're struggling particularly at the secondary level. You know, with, you know, with how to reengage students, you know, some students are, you know, I think the mental health component that we're seeing at the secondary level, especially with high rates of mental health depression, you know, expresses itself with the disengagement. Working is another for many of our secondary students. So there's, there's lots of layers to it, but every, every district was struggling with this as we had that conversation. All trying very unique things, as are we to incentivize, to address the mental health needs. Most importantly, to, to keep track and to recognize when students aren't there, to do that outreach to families, home visits. It really is a layer, layered menu, you know, of, of how we're going to continue to bring the numbers down. My recollection, and I'll get this, I'll get the exact figure, but my recollection is here in Boston, we ranged like between twenty and twenty-six percent in given years for the chronic absenteeism, which, you know, again, is still really high. You know, particularly because some schools go well above that. I think the other complicating factor on the attendance piece is that with COVID post pandemic, you know, we do ask parents to keep kids home when they're sick or when they're having symptoms. And so it's, you know, to, to Director Sevin's point, you know, I think it's really trying to differentiate between students who might be staying home for those reasons or because of exposures or things like that versus students who are disengaged and that's what's driving the chronic absenteeism. And that's really where we have to come up with the broad menu of how to best engage our young people and families.
Ms. Palagu Garcia?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. It's interesting to see in the slide number three, I think in the number three, they are talking about the schools that are leaving the transformation schools.
Okay, I think it's important to mention, I think it's on the slide number three, where you were talking about the schools who are getting out of the transformation schools.
Uh-huh. So my question is, they did, uh, the senior saving, they said they had three processes to be able to work with these schools of transformation, right?
And my question now is that I know Mr. Sevin mentioned that there were three processes in place to work around this, right?
So what did they do to be able to make these schools, what did they offer these schools? It's important that the parents and the community know. What did the district do to be able to make these schools almost, as it says in the slide number three, they are leaving the transformation?
So now my question is, what did you do or what did you offer these schools? So that parents and community knows that what the district is doing. So these schools that are almost out of the, the level of transformation schools.
Thank you for that question and for noticing those four schools on the, the right-hand side of slide three. Those schools have risen above the tenth percentile. The achievement has gone up there. We're studying each school that is increasing their performance and each one is of course different. But some of the common elements that schools have when they improve, obviously, they have strong instruction is the most important thing in, in every classroom. And they arrive at that through a lot of teamwork among teachers, a lot of teacher leadership, and a lot of professional learning by the staff, usually over a number of years. And also the implementation of grade level curriculum that challenges the students. And those schools have also often made some, some great improvements in the culture and climate for students and also for staff. And that's one of the reasons that we see the surveys which are improving for students and staff as a great sign that student performance will soon be following that. Those conditions where the adults feel comfortable and collaborative and where the students feel cared for and engaged, that's the starting point for the achievement to start to go up. What each of these schools in transformation has some extra investments made in them. In what, for example, they get an extra instructional coach to support the learning of the teachers, which is very important. And the four schools on the right, we're not yet removing them from transformation, even though they've gone above the tenth percentile, because we have not yet decided what the right time is to remove those extra supports. We don't want to take away the support the moment they get above the tenth percentile and just have them slip right back in. So at the level of Dr. Eccleston and Superintendent Skipper, thought is going on about how long to keep those resources there and when we need to apply them to, to other schools. So they're not yet exiting, but we should celebrate that their achievement is going up.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this up because that, that's my, my other question is about the follow-up. Because how to think of a plan to not lose these resources that have been so wonderful and have helped these schools leave the transformation?
Because what I'm thinking is that it, it wouldn't be a good idea to take away these resources that have been amazing for these schools in transformation.
And I value that they don't lose these schools because of the concern now that they are almost out of transformation, losing everything they've achieved and received. How has it changed so significantly, the achievement of these schools?
And, you know, I value all of the resources that I've been getting and I don't, I don't want them to lose those resources. Because now that they're almost out of transformation and because of these resources that have been able to have achievements and significant improvement on their performance.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dr. Alkins?
Yes, thank you for this presentation. It's again, always great to see some, some highlights of, of, of progress. I have a few questions, one sort of dovetailing off of Ms. Polanco Garcia's comments. I'm curious as to the network of transformation schools and just what sort of communities of practice they've, they've created among themselves to make sure that they're sharing their strategies with each other. Because it's, it'd be good to see, so something, I don't want to say necessarily there's a magic bullet for, for, for these things, but just series of practices and then particularly for the ones that are getting ready to exit transformation status so that they can also share that knowledge with the ones that are currently there and then also share the knowledge with those who might be sort of entering transformation status. So I'll stop there. That's my first question.
So that, that's, thank you for your question. It's a great question. And because it's something we're thinking about a lot, the most important network for our schools is the regional network. And so, for example, Greenwood is part of region three with Natalie Ake as the wonderful school superintendent. And the most important network for that school is that regional network. And in all nine of the networks, there are transformation schools. I think it ranges from two to six, the number in the networks. And the philosophy we have right now is that the regional network is the key support and the transformation schools received extra attention from the region. And the reason that we think that is a good model is because you don't enter or exit a transformation separate network. That allows us to scale up and scale back supports in a steadier way. It's not an on-off switch. You're within the region and you get as much support within that region as you need. And the transformation office works with all nine regions to ensure that the schools are getting the support they need. So Antonelli and I communicate periodically and he's an example of a school that's getting excellent support from region three and the liaisons and the school superintendent. And if that weren't the case, if he expressed that he needed something more, we would advocate for him. There are other practices across the district by which best practice is shared. And the biggest way that happens is that the monthly principal trainings, meetings take place in schools and we prioritize doing them in transformation schools. And all of the principals actually visit classrooms together in those schools, talk about what they see, share ideas. And so there's an ongoing dialogue within the regions among both the transformation schools and the non-transformation schools. And the transformation office then has some staff and some dialogue with specific schools and connecting them with others. So we do try to connect them as needed. They all have coaches and their coaches all have professional development together. And so they're, they're a network of instructional coaches that goes beyond the region. So, but I think the key takeaway is that the regional structure is what we're most invested in and it seems to be providing them with a high level of support. And I'm sure in a future presentation, someone will share some of the school leader surveys that have been done. But they're showing that school leaders have a, a high appreciation for the, the regional structure and particularly transformation principals are feeling that they're getting the support that they need from that structure.
Thank you. My, my second question is actually related to particularly the, the surveys that were administered. Thank you. Um, um, my, my second question is actually related to um particularly the the surveys that were administered um between, around belonging, engagement and safety. And I'm curious if we have access to the data because I'd love to see some of more of the qualitative responses that were garnered from students, um particularly around um, safety, um, which can give us, I think, more insight as to how we're developing our safety policies. Because it's, it's a direct readout, I mean, in line with what BSAC is doing with their focus groups. But I think um, having a sense, particularly for the transformation data, can get a sense of uh particularly what our Black and Brown students are thinking and what our students are multilingual learners with and multilingual learners, um, students with disabilities as well are really thinking about as to, you know, why, like, like, why they worry about violence, like, within their school? What are the underpinning factors that are there? So um, yeah, just wondering if we, if we have anything that's like that within these surveys.
There, there are some comment uh functions on the surveys and there, there's both quantitative and qualitative data produced by those. And I, I really think this just begs more study because every student obviously deserves to feel safe in school. And so while it's a really big positive that the engagement and the belonging is equivalent in the transformation schools and non-transformation schools, we can't have schools where students feel more unsafe and the in focus groups and in in reading um, those responses, I think, uh, will be informative as to what we should do next.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
Before we move on to Mr. Maida, I saw Mr. Mejia's hand was up as well as superintendent. So I wanted to give you all a chance to comment and then Mr. Maida will move on to your questions.
Go ahead, Principal Mejia.
Thank you, um, it was just to never to the point that Mr. Sabins was um mentioning in terms of the network. Within the PLCs for principals, there's also some consultancies which I found really helpful. So when I think about the network, I get access to the principals who are also in transformation schools. But also, when I get to hear the challenges or the initiative that other principals that might not be in transformation, I also benefit from that as well. I just wanted to share that um example specifically.
Thank you.
Superintendent?
Yes, uh, through your chair, um, so to Mr. O'Neill's question, um, just quickly looking at uh, the reported out through DESI. So the two years prior to the pandemic that were just pure years, so two thousand seventeen, eighteen, and then eighteen, nineteen, so no impact by pandemic. Uh, in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, we were at twenty-five point five percent chronic absence. And then uh, very similarly, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, twenty-five point five, point two. So again, that twenty-five to twenty-six range. Um, twenty thousand, two thousand nineteen, twenty was compromised the second half of the year, March on. So it's not great data, nor is two thousand twenty, twenty-one, because it was predominantly remote. So then if you look at next, at last year, which was the full year, twenty-one, twenty-two, we shot up to forty-two point two percent. That's going to be a very similar pattern to most of the national data for for a district our size. In that, somewhere around that, you know, twenty to twenty-five percent and then um, you know, shooting up and and showing that incredible, you know, forty, low forties.
Yes, Superintendent, I, uh, Madam Chair, is it okay if I respond to that? I, I tied that data with the other data Mr. Sabin showed, which was engagement in school. Do you feel engaged? Do you feel safe? And, you know, there's a variety of ways that students feel engaged in school. Sometimes it is the academics, we hope it's the academics. Sometimes it's the arts, sometimes it's clubs, sometimes it's sports. Right? And, and that shows the value of, you know, having a full enriching experience for our students that they want to uh go to the school. I, I recognize this as a national challenge and thank you for sharing the data, Superintendent, from before the pandemic and and what it shot up to and what it's working down. I think that's why I'm getting at, you know, what are the core issues? What was the low-hanging fruit and then what are the core issues? And I think homelessness, as Mr. Mejia pointed out, is a challenge for us when students have to be transported to a shelter a ways away. You know, families' response to COVID, as you pointed out, Superintendent, where we're sending the message, if you see even symptoms, stay home for seven days or that type of thing, is clearly impacting it. It's also doing, i- it's, but it's tying those two pieces of data together of how engaged they feel in the school. And those numbers were pretty low, I mean, forty-three percent even for our younger students. That to me is really low. And thinking in terms of, you know, Superintendent, you mentioned about hearing ideas from other districts. And I remembered hearing Cleveland took S of funds to make a bigot investment in esports. Because that is a growing trend and a lot of the students who are interested in esports aren't interested in traditional athletics. Many of them are, but many of them aren't as well. And they used S of funds to make the investment in the computers and the systems, knowing that that would run out in a couple of years, but they had made the capital investment. And they put esports teams, I think, in every middle and high school in their district. And they've seen huge engagement on those numbers. So, you know, every idea we can, I, I, to me, a lot of it is the core about engagement.
Yeah.
And, you know, students go, particularly when they feel they have the choice, which is more in the high school years, as you pointed out. Do they want to be there? And yes, there were job issues and there were family issues and there were transportation issues and there were housing issues and a whole range of issues. But that engagement piece is critical.
Yeah, the engagement and the relationship. And I think, you know, this is, this is like frankly, like, community connector positions, really working to connect students and families with agency resources that frankly, schools may or may not traditionally be able to, like housing. You know, the food security stuff, I mean, it's, it's a lot of societal stuff. Um, but really being able to to do that, I think the mental health, the role of social workers, um, our BAM and our WOW programming. And then at the high school level, I think, you know, the, you know, certainly the co- the college and career, you know, the, you know, making learning applicable and like, what are we doing, you know, why are we doing it? You know, and and giving students like something that they're interested in. Um, certainly our arts and music, we know a lot of our students, you know, connect to arts and music and and that's a a strong reason why they come. So I, you know, a lot of these, it's, it's really a multi-approach as we get to it. But I think is this, you know, the survey points out, part of this is really talking to the students. Um, you know, to identify for them, what is it that that's going to draw them um to school and to stay in school? Um, so this is, this is the work, you know, and that, that is um, that we're in and and will continue to do and to continue in the, you know, this budget to put additional resource to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Maida?
You're muted.
You're muted, yeah.
Bro, I'm getting worse than my grandma at this. Um, anyway. Um. So I'm first gonna ask my question, then I'll share my thoughts on this. But um, so with the climate and culture, um, uh, I see you're, um, you're getting social workers and family liaisons to try and uh, and to try and implement services to improve that. My que- what are your strategies and exactly, yeah, how are you trying to do that?
So um, it's good to remember we're talking about thirty different schools here and they range very widely from a small elementary school to large high schools. So the strategy in each school may be very different. But some of the elements are the same. So making sure there are strong relationships between adults and students and students and students. And constantly working on strengthening those relationships, so everyone's well-known. They have trusted friends and trusted adults. Those things are essential. We also want to make sure schools are well-organized, not confusing chaotic places, but they're well-organized. And so different schools in the improvement planning process reflect on their school culture. They look at their surveys and other information and they each make plans about how they're going to improve. So my report's on thirty schools, so it's very general. But if you were to look at the plan of an individual school, it might look very different from other schools. The last thing I would just mention is that it's very important to ask the students. And I just participated recently in focus groups at Excel and at English and at Dearborn. And students are very perceptive about what they love about their school and about ideas about how it could be better. And so making sure we're having opportunities to discuss with students, this information is also something very important and have that contribute to our planning.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that response. Um, okay, um, just comment here. Um. Well, we're talking about uh why some students don't show up at school. Um. This is, I agree with you on a lot of the stuff. I think another thing we need to keep in mind, um, this is from my experience especially. Um, this is actually, I don't know, it's semi-related. Um. It's that there's less student engagement when students are having trouble in school, period. And so that just makes it that much harder.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Maida. Um, I have a couple of sort of questions and comment. And one, I saw that within some of your strategies, you talked about providing incentives for school leaders or new school leaders. My question is, you know, and again, this may be a union issue, I don't know. But the question is, has there been any attempt to use any kind of incentives to encourage teachers who are working in high-performing schools to actually take on coming to work in, in, in transformational schools?
That is a great question and um, there were some small, in, I was the principal at Dever McCormick from two thousand ten to two thousand fifteen. At that time, turnaround had some small incentives designed to help recognize teachers. But I think it was pretty widely concluded that it didn't have a good impact. Uh, the size of the incentive that might be needed is something that I, I don't think too many districts have tried. I will say that I think the most important thing for teachers, the work conditions, the feeling that they're supported, that they have a voice, that they have a leadership opportunity, that they're being successful and that they're doing important work. So I, I think that the work conditions for teachers are the most important thing that people are looking for when they're searching for a job. But it would be interesting to know what level of incentive would also attract our strongest teachers. The Teach Plus program, I remember was also, it wasn't at my school, Orchard Gardens and and Blackstone and a few others had that. That was an initiative back in the two thousand ten to two thousand fifteen that did have a somewhat larger incentive to lure teacher leaders to to turn around schools. And I do, I do think that was somewhat successful as I, as I recall.
Okay, yeah. I, I share concerns of others of taking away funding from schools as they are exiting um turnaround because obviously it was the the use of additional resources that allowed them to achieve. And I think we need a different kind of attitude of maybe trying to look at what does it really take to fund adequately a school with students that have high needs? And to make it not something you get be- and and taken away when you improve, but something to build on because we don't want anybody slipping back. And in a lot of ways, if we looked at some of that um funding, we might be able to prevent others from slipping into it. It shouldn't, you, you shouldn't only get resources or the kind of resources you need when you are sinking. That, that sends to me the wrong message. Superintendent, I, I'll let you answer on that too before.
Yeah, I mean, it's through your chair, I, like, hundred percent. I think this is just the age-old thing right now, like, where schools get labeled, they get extra things, then they get unlabeled and then we take it away. And it's that yo-yo effect that is just really detrimental to the students and the staff. So this is exactly what we're trying to figure out here. Um, and I've actually raised it to DESI to sort of say like, what is the best thinking and practice around this? You know, now that there's been so many years of turnaround schools and transformation schools and so. So I, I, we fully agree and I think, you know, in the case of Gru and English, um, you know, we kept resources in place for this very reason. Um, because it is counterintuitive to think that exactly what got them to be able to to exit, if you, if you remove that, you're going to have a different outcome. So we agree, we agree fully. This is an area we'll continue to to look at and um, take a look at the research as well. Um, to come up with recommendation in this, in this part.
Yeah, my, my other questions are about teachers. So one thing, when we look at um turnaround schools, many of them have been in turnaround for a number of years. And then I particularly think about this with high schools where your average student may be in the school for four years, but some of these schools have been in turnaround for eight, ten years or more. And in, and the consistent factor needs to be what's going on with its faculty and its programs that you, you know, that we have not learned from the time these kids are in the ninth grade, you know, and an investment going up so that by the time the next cohort comes in, we've improved those things and it seems like we're perpetuating. I'm not quite sure what to call it, that, that allows schools to remain in turnaround. And so what are we doing as we're looking at that? Particularly for um, the faculty, you know, where is the training and the support um, for them to improve? And how, how is that turnaround status in their participation? And whatever, you know, helping that whole unit rethink itself? You know, because, you know, why, I mean, if I were working in a school, I would want to ask myself, why are we constantly falling to the bottom? What, what needs to happen? Where are their voices? Where were their recommendations?
I, I think what your comments bring to mind is, is that we often try to have simple solutions and move too fast and then try something else. And we probably all know that doesn't work. And that I think what the district's trying to do right now is to organize itself into very supportive regions, so everyone has support with a limited number of priorities, this focus on equitable literacy over a long period of time. And then root everything in what's going on in the actual classroom. And so slow, steady progress focusing on students being challenged, engaged and supported within the classroom. And teachers getting the professional development, the coaching and then the collaborative environment that they need. And the superintendent just mentioned Gru and English as two examples that have exited underperforming status. Very specific things, wonderful things happened over years at those two schools. Very collaborative, extra learning time for adults, lots of hard work to get to know every student and support them. And just day-to-day problem-solving, looking at learning and looking at engagement and belonging and just consistently making small adjustments to make things better. And those two schools are a lot different than they used to be and they should be very proud of the work that they've done. And th- th- those are two of many examples that exist of what's needed. We just have to sustain that and stop other schools from slipping back at the same time. Um, so that's kind of the theme of what we're talking about.
Mm-hmm. I have one final question. I, I know also that um, as I, as we look at kids coming in in the early childhood years and it seems like we can get our kids to kindergarten and be sort of on target. Then, then something happens in grades one and two, and then we look at them again in grade three and they have lost their gains. How, what are we doing to really make sure that we are linking the learning and the the needs from one grade to the next? So we have kids who are ready for promise struggling two years later.
I think you've captured the thing we're all thinking about the most and we, we see some of that in the data and um, I think it's around professional learning, implementing the science of reading in K to two and implementing high quality curriculum with, with inclusion and tiered supports in grades three and up. And I, I believe that while we're not seeing that progress um, to the extent we want to yet, if we stay the course, we will see that where w- we know that high quality curriculum delivered with um, with coaching for teachers over time and not switching around all the time, but steadily supporting the growth of teachers is critical. And you can put together, looking at the high vacancy numbers at transformation schools, that coaching's very important and stabilizing the employment is very important because people need to be able to learn the curriculum, learn the instructional strategies and stabilize those situations. And that's when the real growth will start to happen.
Okay, is there anything that we can do that, you know, that says, you know, y- you know, and I'm sure if you can get someone to commit or whatever for a period of time because it seems like our children are struggling as a result of the churn and turn of the staffing and not necessarily because of their own abilities. They won't even know their own abilities because they're not getting the kind of teaching that they deserve. So, so what, what else can be done?
Well, that's probably beyond my ability to really answer, but the one thing that, that I would say, just having come back to BPS for a year is that we, I think there's a very promising strategy. And staying the course and strengthening our implementation of this approach with equitable literacy and the regional structure. Deepening its implementation and not just reversing direction, that's probably what's needed most. And then we'll have slow and steady growth over time instead of it feeling um, too chaotic. And I believe that's what's been happening. So I feel very optimistic personally.
Great, thank you. Superintendent and then Dr. Alkins.
Yeah, I was just going to, I was just going to add, I, I think Mike did a great job with that. I, I was just going to add that I think it's stability of leadership at the school level. And then for the, for the staff, I think it's, it's the working conditions, like to know that they're going to get the supports. And so I think the regional model is one of the ways of stabilizing and making sure that those supports happen. I also think when we see issues in a school, it's as a district being responsive to that. So if, whether it's, you know, the Henderson or to what, whatever the school is that's struggling because schools can struggle. I think it's our commitment to respond to that, to respond to the leader, to respond to the community. Those are the, the kinds of things that in, even in a difficult, in a school where um, the conditions have previously been difficult, if you can reassure and provide that stability. Um, then, you know, staff, staff will stay and make that commitment because ultimately, teachers want to make a difference to students, right? That's, that's why we teach, that's why we lead. Um, so creating those conditions, no matter what it takes, that's going to keep staff in place. Um, I think, you know, right now in the teaching profession, given everything that's happened with the pandemic, we're working really hard to stabilize our teaching profession nationally and locally. Um, and so that, that is, that's going to be the piece. I also think there's a lot of teachers on emergency license. So we're working really hard right now to help them as professionals be able to do the steps they need to get their permanent license. So it's, it's complex in, in the sense there's a lot of moving parts. But I think what we have in the district is a strong commitment and recogni- you know, recognition that uh, this is some of the most important work we can do to have those teachers stay in place, to get the continued year after year PD and development um, and make that commit- commitment as, as professionals to our teachers corps and to our leader corps. Because there's nothing more destabilizing for teachers than when the leader leaves. So these are, these are all the different components.
Great, thank you. Doctor Al- Doctor Alkins?
Um, yeah, and you know, this feeds into this, this idea. I mean, radical ideas of incentivizing in my, you know, in my head, you know, it's, and it's not as simple as hey, teachers, more to be in transformation schools, you know, or um, you know, getting your, and thinking about how you're getting your more experienced teachers per se, like within those transformation schools. Um, so yeah, I look forward to this discussion. I, I have a question related to um, sort of the resources that are at each of the transformation schools and are some of these schools as we're thinking about things like school consolidation, um, particularly. Um, should we be having any of these schools on our radar, just thinking about for, for the purposes of making sure that every student is sitting in front of a teacher? Um, and, 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 I mean, even a certified teacher or making sure that students are able to pursue, if it's like, are able to sit in, in a class, it's a, a, a language class, but making sure that they have uh, the, the proper teacher that's standing in front of them, that's, that's doing that. And so does consolidation in some way, as we're talking about it, help to solve some of those issues? And I'm, or just thinking, uh, superintendent, just where some of your thinking is around that?
Yeah, so I, I mean, I think this is, um, there's like a lot of different kinds of, I think, data on the impact of, um, performance, I don't want to say performance bonus, but like in- incentivizing um, in different ways. I think what we've sort of tied things to that has been successful is like, so for instance, like in in the turnaround or in trans- in, in transformation where there's additional time that's being allocated to professional development. Um, or I won't even say, it's not even just professional development, it's professional time together for teachers to meet. Like I think there's particular things that we're, we should be looking at as a district strategy for what that could yield or what that could look like. Um. There's also though, the kind of the realism of burnout. And I, I think one of the things right now that's like just very real for staff is they're giving everything they have during the hours of school. And they're finding it really difficult between family and themsel- and, and the, the time they're giving in school to give more. So it, it's, this is a bit of a, a puzzle that we're trying to kind of piece together here. Um, we see it, whether it's in this, we see it in the acceleration academies, we see it in summer um, and summer opportunities to match staff with students. We see it in a lot of different places and there is some tension wire here between um, the health and welfare of our staff um, and burning out. So I don't really have a clean answer other than that we're, we're looking at it and we're trying to figure out um, how to best support so that during the school hours um, teachers and our, our general education staff can be the most impactful to our young people. Um, and then over and above that, what are the other resources we can bring to the table as fresh? That are able to again, have that impact, but in a different way. Um, be it in the out of school time, be it in the evenings, be it, you know, in the. So I think that's, you know, again, the community connector positions, I think, is a goal of second shift, right, of having another group that can continue to make connections and build relationships with students. Um, you know, in the, in the times that we see students almost most more needed even than during school, when there's fewer adults around or present. Um, but it is, um, it is definitely, I mean, this was a conversation when I went to DC, this was a conversation on Esther in general. And the amount of um, how difficult it was for districts everywhere to spend the Esther dollars if it involved people. Because people just could not make that emotional and physical commitment. So um, we're hoping that as we're kind of coming down from the pandemic, as we're becoming as a district more strategic, more dependable and reliable through the regional model. And we're putting all of those kinds of resources in place that we'll be able to gain a bit more um, regularity and semblance um, than certainly what our students have experienced and our staff have experienced over the last couple of years. And I know, I think Dr. Eccleston actually wants to jump in, um, Chair, I don't, he's someplace on the screen, but I can't find.
He's there.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you, excuse me. Um, uh, if I could just say a few things, um, that I think are important, I want to particularly like build off of some of the questions that Chair Robinson, um, asked, which I think are really dug in and important. I wanted to just begin by thanking Professor Leah, uh, for his leadership. Um, I had a chance to be at the Sarah Greenwood a few times, um, in the last school year during his leadership. I've also previously supervised the school and I, I think what his leadership demonstrates to me is that when a community has a high level of trust um, in their leader, when that leader demonstrates high levels of competence and clarity. Uh, and then when we're focused on the right things at the right time and we're managing change in a way that's at the rate that adults and community can move forward. We see things moving and I think I can start to see not only evidence from my observations of the school, but also in the quantitative data of things moving at his school and others' processes. And so I want to thank him for his leadership as well as the support of the region and, and regional school superintendent, um, not even can say. I wanted to just make this comment though, because I think in, in response to Chair Robinson's questions and um, I think, I think we nailed some really important points. I think some things I just want to double down on and then one other idea that I want to introduce to the equation is really important. If I think for too long in the BPS, it's been, let a thousand flowers be made. Um, that's been true relative to curriculum, um, and to other choices that we made. And from my perspective, that's had really detrimental impact, um, at the academic opportunities and outcomes that are schools. And I want to thank, um, the senior deputy super, superintendent, uh, Dr. Chen for her leadership and the leadership of entire curriculum instruction team, including chief, as Ryan Miller, for just being super clear. Every school must implement high quality instructional material, period. We have a set of district-supported materials. We encourage and incentivize and support their use. We allow for some flexibility for schools to select other options. But two things need to be true. Those materials need to be highly rated. And two, you need to complete a racial equity planning tool if you're going to implement that. And the level of support that can be provided from the district can't match the things that we can be relevant to the, the district-supported curriculum. And, and while I think we can build supports around those things, and I think there's further evidence to suggest, you know, a year ago, we had about twenty percent of our principals respond positively to the comments that the district uh, central office supports you in my work. Two, in our most reach recent submission of, of almost seventy or in excess of seventy percent of principals reporting that the central office is supporting them. I'm, I'm, um, I'm clear-eyed about this, that we have significant work to do to better support our principals, and I don't think they fully arrived. But the support that Principal Stave and others have mentioned around the regional support model, model matter. What's equally important though, and this is the other part of the equation that I wanted to make, is that this isn't and can't be all about support. A system that isn't counterbalanced by an equal unit of accountability will not get the results that we need. We need a universal um, set of metrics that need to be true across all schools. I don't care if you're autonomous, I don't care what type of school you are. All schools need to be demonstrating continuous improvement. And we need to ensure high levels of support and accountability for that.
Slow down, excuse me, do a slowdown a bit?
I apologize, sorry. Um, we need to ensure that our system is built around a performance management framework that articulates a universal set of targets for all schools and metrics for all schools. And that we are holding schools accountable for outcomes and ensuring that they have those equal units of support to be networked. That from my perspective is going to be game changing as we go to implement this work around performance management, work, or work in the, in the future. And I, and all of my time in BPS have not seen a system built around a set of academic outcomes that are universal for all schools. And so I just wanted to make sure that I add that point to the question you posed because I think um, it's going to be a really important part of the equation.
Yes, thank you. Are there any final questions? Okay. If not, I want to say thank you all for this very robust conversation and we look forward to future updates on this critical issue. We'll now move on to public comment on reports. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Chair. We have no speakers for public comments on reports.
Thank you. Is there any new business? All right, that concludes our business for this evening. The next virtual school committee meeting will take place on Wednesday, April twenty sixth at five PM. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Thank you, Dr. Alkins.
Yes.
Mr. Fred Hernandez, Ms. Lopera, Ms. Polanco Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Tran, Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, and good night all.
Ms. Robinson?
Yes, good night and have a great vacation week.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you.